An opportunity for the council members to ask questions of staff and other experts that we might have invited in. And hopefully, the information that they attain will help them when we do meet, which is a week from today at the regular council meeting, or excuse me, from yesterday, where the decisions are made and votes are taken. So on our new business, one thing we have to do every year is select a mayor pro tem, so that when I'm away, or heaven forbid if I end up being sick, we have someone who steps in in my place. For the past few years, it's been John Flynn. But at the regular meeting, I will open the floor for nominations. You can nominate somebody or nominate yourself, and then we'll have a vote. And it's just the majority wins and away we go.
I'll nominate Doug Fowler.
No nominating.
Not yet, Larry, that's next week.
All right, well, you've heard what I'm gonna say.
That's fine. Okay, I'm going to jump around a bit. Unlike a regular session, a work session, I have the latitude to take different pieces of the agenda in different order than they are presented. And that gives us the opportunity to let our guests go early in the game.
Could I ask a question before we go farther, Mayor?
Sure.
Could we make item A, the select mayor pro tem, and the business items?
Well, it's not an ordinance and it's not a resolution.
It'll be listed different in the regular agenda than it is here.
Okay, so it stands out, is what I'm saying.
Right, it's just here to remind everybody at the work session of that that's the time we do it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all right, I'm going to ask you to turn to item number B, please, which is an ordinance. Amending Article 3 of Chapter 24 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Bella Vista, clarifying the definition of special event to modify the timing requirements for applications and to make additional modifications and for other purposes. Cassie has been working on this with Mr. Kelly. And so, Cassie, perhaps you can take us through the changes. What did the old language say and what are you proposing to your floor?
Okay, so this came about because we are starting to see more and more events. Granted, we didn't see events last year because of COVID and all that. And this year is likely to be the same kind of situation where we might have very few events. But to get on top of it for the future, when we do start getting back to normal, this is intended to make things a little bit more streamlined and a little bit easier for the city, specifically when it comes to lining up police and fire personnel that we need for larger events on the trails. Obviously, the city doesn't have a lot of property where events are held. We don't rent out parks or anything like that. But we do have trail events for which we provide police and EMS assistance. So this kind of streamlines that. So going down in the first section, the wording was just changed in the definition to add the trails specifically, because the former ordinance did not address specifically events on trails. And this also, I believe it's the word competitions, was added to widen the scope of it to include sporting type events. Following down in Section 2, we changed the filing period wording to say 90 days, at least 90 days in advance. Currently, the ordinance says 10 business days. So I would like to change this so that we are notified of any event proposal at least 90 days in advance. And that gives us plenty of time to work with the event organizer to line everything out that we need and work out any kinks. Going down to that subsection D, talking about the date. The verbiage that was added on that one was the very last sentence that lines out the starting and ending times. That we don't want it to start earlier than 6:00 AM or end later than 10:30 PM. Not exist in the, it doesn't exist in the way that the ordinance is currently worded. The next subsection E, the part that was added was the very last sentence calling for the course maps to be provided to the city at least 30 days prior to the start of the event that's held on a public trail. This is for when we need to secure particularly police personnel to cover the crossings for safety. How we have worked it in the past is we give the map to the PD. They look over it and determine which crossings they think are particularly dangerous and how many personnel they're going to need for that event. And then we get back with the organizer and work with them to get all that ironed out. So having the ordinance will say the course map needs to be provided just gives us more time to work that out. Further down, subsection F, the part that's added is again at the very end where we ask whether there is a pre-registration for the event or if there is a registration fee. This just allows us to know how the organization is working and whether they're making money off of the event or not. Subsection H, the part that was added is in the second line where it says where they, what they propose is the venue along with the proposed parking areas. Because particularly with trail events, there are very few parking areas to accommodate large amounts of cars. So we need to make sure we have that information prior to the event. Sometimes that information requires us working with other organizations to secure the okay to park cars there. So it just gives us time to work that out and make sure everybody is doing what they are allowed to be doing. Any questions so far?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
At any one point in time, depending on the number of personnel, will we be turning around and asking for some kind of reimbursement? You know, one or two cops or a couple of firemen, that's okay. But if we end up with a large group, are we ever thinking about asking for some kind of reimbursement or are we just gonna eat it?
Yeah, that's further down, we're not there yet.
Okay.
Okay, going down.
I have a question, Cassie. Is the 90 days, is that just an absolute drop dead? I mean, you have to give 90 days notice?
Well, we're asking for at least 90 days, and I believe it says not more than 180 days.
Yeah, okay.
Why?
Well, I was wondering also, does that apply to the city or just outside parties?
To everyone.
It would be across the board to whoever is applying for an event permit.
I mean, I can't think of an example, but I could see a situation where something good happened. The city thought that maybe they wanted to have some kind of event and it was less than 90 days.
I'm not sure, Jason, would the city need to ask for its own permission to hold an event?
I mean, if we're talking about an event on our own property or property that we control, I don't think we would have to ask ourselves for a permit.
So then this really wouldn't be applicable.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that it would, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving down.
I guess one question I would have is about the 90 days. How did you arrive at that as opposed to something less? Because the plan actually has to come in on 30 days about the route. So that's a big window between 30 and 90.
A lot of times, the event organizer will approach us with their plan to host an event, but they don't have those details ironed out specifically yet. So it's very possible we'll hear about the event they're planning and they won't even have the route done yet.
Okay, but hearing about the event and having the application in is two different things, is it? Even though they don't.
Hearing about the event would be them providing us the application. They're gonna apply for the permit and tell us they want to hold this event. But it's likely at that time, they won't have the exact course set.
And so that's the 60-day period in between the 90-application date, drop dead date, and then the final course alignment at 30 days, okay.
And that buffer there really gives us cushion in the event. We have more events that we ever actually do right now. Because if we don't want them stacking up back to back to back to back. And so this allows us a little bit of cushion in that case where we can view them more closely.
But with the 90 days, so all of them have to be in at the same time if they're going to be in a fairly short window thereafter.
Mm-hmm.
So.
That just gives us way more advanced notice about what we could potentially be facing. Just gives, it really just gives us more opportunity to plan and prepare ourselves.
Okay.
Anybody else? That's also consistent with other, well, with at least Bentonville. Okay, so we were on the new subsection of 2I, which is added, where they need to specify in their permit if police or EMS is requested. This is currently not in the ordinance as the way it's worded now. But we need to know beforehand, or we need to know as soon as possible if they're going to be asking for police or EMS assistance from us. And then the next subsection 3 is where it addresses the fee. So the current ordinance just lines out the application fee of $25. This one will add that they will be charged $30 per hour per police officer and $150 per hour for any dedicated standby ambulance and personnel and $115 per hour for an ATV unit in lieu of an ambulance. These figures came from the two chiefs. We discussed it and this is what they gave me. So that was their call that they put those figures in there.
A question about the rates for the standby police officer, ambulance, and ATV. Would it be better to refer those numbers to a separate section? Because if we wanted to amend these in the future, we'd have to amend the ordinance, which is a little more involved than referring to our schedule, which I don't think we have to necessarily have it as.
Larry, I don't think it's actually been put anywhere what we charge. And so you're correct, it would require a change of the ordinance to change the amount. If you want more leeway in that amount, the ordinance would need to say something like, it would say what the permit fee is and then say something like applicants will be charged per hour rates for needed police officer, VMS, ambulances, and ATVs as determined by the mayor in a schedule or something, you know, something along those lines where it would be up to someone to determine that rate. That would give more flexibility. But you are correct, if this would not be that flexible if you incorporate in your ordinance.
Don't we have a schedule now, Jason, that does that kind of thing where we have different penalty things in there? Is that in an ordinance or is that in?
Penalties in terms of penalties for violation, that's built into our code elsewhere. That's punishments, that's entirely different. Here, we're talking about a fee to be charged. And so that's a little bit different. I mean, we've adopted fees as it relates to other things. Off the top of my head, I can't, I mean, there are certain fees we charge related to certain community development applications, for example. That would be the, probably the only example I could think of off the top of my head. But it's a different way of doing it, but perfectly valid way of doing it if that's something that the council wants to do.
It would be an easier way for us to adjust the schedule that way. I'm thinking, but that's just an opinion.
I agree that it would be nice to be able to change that because I think in the future, it might end up needing to be adjusted.
I agree.
Okay, so what I'll do is I will, before it comes, the version you get in the regular meeting packet will say something along the lines of what I just said, that I'll change it to talk about the requirement for reimbursement related to these expenses and a method how they'll be calculated. And we won't put the numbers in there. So I'll be on the lookout for that and I'll try to incorporate that into the change for the final agenda.
And now, Steve, we talked about the standby ambulance and then if sometimes people just request a medic and not a dedicated ambulance. Is if there's another, is there another category there?
Yeah, I would think that that would be a separate charge. Like for an EMT, if they just wanted an EMT, it'd be one charge and I was thinking $30 an hour for a paramedic would be 50.
So does that mean, does that mean just an EMT is just hanging out there without the ATV?
That's correct, like an EMT at an aid station.
Right.
Oh, okay. And you, and do you want to offer that service? Or do you just want to stick to the ambulance or ATV?
Well, occasionally, we do just a standby EMT, like at the APT tournament. We do just a standby EMT. So an EMT or a paramedic without an ambulance or ATV unit. So we've done that in the past. So I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of one of the things that if we do it from now on, if we do the 115 charge, then we would probably do the ATV with the set of hands.
But if you go with the schedule as Jason is describing, you could add a bunch of things in there and then make it like a menu board of what they wanted to have present at the event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, yeah, that would be easier to change up in the future, too. I like that. Okay. Anybody else?
I got a question.
Yes.
What if there, any provision for more than one application for a particular day?
Like if we have two events going on at the same time?
Yeah, you got an application, you got an application for two events or for another event. You already got one application, you got another one. I mean, it's just.
Jerry, our code already provides that it's first come, first served. So if we get an application for a particular window of time, they get the permit and the city's not allowed to grant a second permit for the same period of time.
Okay. Even if it's two smaller events, one wouldn't hurt the other if it was personnel-wise and stuff?
Well, if they're not conflict, I mean, you might have one on the east side of town and one on the west. I mean, but that wouldn't be in conflict.
Okay.
I mean.
Same location, basically.
Basically.
Or relatively close, that one would overlap the other.
Yeah. Our code, I can tell you exactly what our code says on that if you give me just a moment.
Should we go on while you're looking it up?
Yeah, go ahead, Cassie, if you would.
Okay, further down under Section 3, the first sentence said the mayor will get back with a, making the ultimate call whether it's approved or denied within two business days. We wanted to stretch that out a little bit and give a little bit more time. Subsection B is talking about the route. We added the last part that says all highway and street crossings will require at least one police officer, looks like there's a typo, for the duration of the event. The number of officers necessary at each crossing will be determined in the sole discretion of the police department. So this just basically says, you know, like when Tour de Cure comes to Bella Vista, they ride their bikes on Highway 71. So this would just tell them that they are, they require to have a police officer there. They can't just try to have this event without any police officers helping them with traffic. And the police is the one, are going to be the ones who determine which crossings need to be covered because they're gonna better know the traffic in those certain areas. Which is how we've worked it in the past and that has worked out really well. Larry?
Would we want to clarify that exact language that you spoke about now, Cassie? In the ordinance here, in other words, require at least one police officer for the duration of the event for all highway and street crossings as determined by the police department?
That's what it says.
I think it, it's, I think it'd be fine just saying that if they plan to cross the highway and then they need a police officer there. They can't be on the freeway without police.
I didn't read the next sentence, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, moving down to subsection D. This was created new. We do have one specific event, the Oz Trails Off-Road, which is the really large mountain biking event that has happened for two years and then obviously was canceled last year. They ride a portion of their course on a residential street. And they send out notification in advance as directed by us to let the residents of that street know that that event is coming through there. So this just lines out the rules for that and says that they will be required to notify the residents at least five days prior that an event will be coming through there.
Cassie, I've got the, for the council in section, it's not in your, what you've got in front of you and I can certainly get you a copy of our current provisions, that would probably be helpful to you. But in section 24-49A3, it basically puts a requirement on the mayor to issue a permit within two days as provided. If no other parade or special event has previously been issued a permit for the same date and location as requested in the application. If two or more applications request the same date for parade or special event, the mayor shall consider the applications in the order they were filed. And there are other requirements for issuance as well, but that's the one that deals with same location and date.
Thank you. Larry, I think you still had a question?
I do. Relative to the notifications, I would add in there that they provide you with a list of the addresses that they've provided notification to. So you know, so you know exactly where they provided them. So if there's a question that comes in, you've got some documentation that they should have gotten to notice. Just to provide a list of the addresses that were notified along the route to you five days before the parade.
We could do that if you all think that's necessary, just for further information on that one. For that Oz Trails Off-Road event, they get the addresses from us. Our, the planning department provides those addresses to them.
But you were talking about one of them is on a city street for sure. And that would be the one that you would want the notification for, with the list of addresses they've notified.
Right. Yeah, that's fine if you guys think that's necessary, but.
I think what Cassie's saying is we give them the list and then we'd be requiring them to turn around and give us the list back.
Yeah, we typically provide them with the address.
Even if it's along that street that we're talking about where it occurs?
Yeah, we give them the residential addresses in that area.
Okay.
And usually, because it's the same situation, too, with that event in particular because it goes along the trail that runs along Houston Road where there's a lot of streets that the trail crosses there. And we notify the people that live on those streets that there's an event coming through. So we give them those addresses, too.
Okay, all right. Good.
Anything else about that? Okay, moving down to Section 4, this one talks about signage. We added the end part that talks about, let's see, it says, fourth line down, it says permit applications are responsible, applicants are responsible for all signage related to a parade or a special event. And it provides a timeframe which they have to put the signs up and take them down. So this just means any signs that they're gonna use, they purchase them, they put them up, they take them down. They do everything and they need to be removed within three days following the event. Questions about that one?
I do. I have a question about the thickness. It says no greater than eight ply 0.03 inch thickness cardboard. Probably should have inches in there unless you're talking about millimeters or whatever. But do you allow cardboard? And if you know what cardboard is, it's two pieces of paper laminated over a piece of foam. And they use that for posters and things. Sometimes they may want to do that because it's fairly rigid, but it will bend or break. But it's a different material and it's stiffer, so I don't know.
All that is existing, all that's in the current ordinance? The only thing we added was the timeframe and that the applicants are responsible for the signage. But if we need to change the materials.
Yeah, that part didn't change. The eight ply 0.03 thickness is exactly what our current code says. It's a good point. Is it 0.0, I don't, I don't know if 0.03 is a sort of a standard in terms of paper construction or if it's an inch or if it's a millimeter or if it's a centimeter. So that could stand for some clarification even outside of what we're doing, but that's what currently says.
So what if they come in and want to use cardboard as an example as opposed to the cardboard, is that?
I'm a little surprised that we come in and say, you want a sign, bring us to, we take a ruler to the width of the sign. I don't even know why we care, to be honest, but that's an editorial comment. But probably because they'll blow around and get ugly, I'm gonna.
Honestly, I can't say that we have ever even addressed that. We just make sure they're following the city's sign codes. We've never actually looked at signage materials for any event, honestly.
Then the question would be, should we have it in here if we don't look at it?
I don't personally think we need it, but up to you guys.
You might want to, you might just want to, I mean, again, you might just say something general like sturdy construction or something, but.
So they're not blowing all over the place?
Yeah, but you know, there, if you have a standard in there, at least you can point to it and say, no, that's too flimsy, it's this. So when you start getting vague, then you really undermine the need for the rule because it's sort of a matter of interpretation. Because we're talking about the required, the required thickness of hand-carried signs is what we're talking about. You probably would be safe to avoid the discussion altogether, but there's some reading, reason for it, I don't know what it is.
Another thing about that that I didn't think about is, you know, signage for trail events is there are often not even signs at all. Like for the back 40 events, they tie ribbon around trees. So that would be completely, it's not a hand-carried sign at all. So if we, if we left it as it is, then those ribbons technically don't fall within this wording and they could leave them up for 10 days if they wanted.
Well, they could leave them up until their required time to remove everything has expired. That wouldn't fall under the sign requirement.
You keep signs being made out of plywood so people wouldn't be able to bring them and hit other people with them?
That's exactly, that would be.
I'm just saying, you know.
Well, and that, you know.
With all the vandalism that's gone on and some of the demonstrations and riots around the country, as an example, a half-inch piece of plywood can do a lot of damage. And so you may want to limit the thickness, not greater than and shall not be rigid like boards or whatever.
I'm happy to, I don't know anything about sign thicknesses, so whatever someone wants me to draft up, I'll be happy to put together. I don't have a recommendation because I just don't know enough about it.
Can't you put down what we use for campaign signs?
The rigid board. Cassie, what does Bentonville use or have you looked at theirs?
Let me see if I have.
Or can we leave this, can we leave this with you until, until, you know, we publish for the regular meeting?
Yes, yeah, and I'll look into that.
Okay.
A suggestion would be is if you're looking at a thickness, I would say no greater than one eighth, one-quarter inch thickness. If you're looking at a maximum, because plywood at that thickness is pretty flexible. Can't do a lot of damage with it. So a suggestion.
Because remember, this is an ordinance change, so it has to go through three readings. So we've got, unless somebody wants to escalate it into third and final at some point, you know, we've got three months to tinker with the wording. So if you want to take an initial stab, Cassie, that'd be terrific.
Okay.
I think in the interest of anyone planning an event in Bella Vista that we would not want to go through the full three readings. But I think two would be an appropriate thing. It gets the word out, everyone at least has some notification to respond.
We are also not permitting any events at least through the month of March. So if three readings was necessary, there's time for that.
Okay.
Okay, let's try Section F.
Okay, so the only thing that changed there is the current ordinance says volunteers can be the age of 10 and this one just changes it to be 14. That's in line with Bentonville's and it just, to me, it seems a little more responsible to increase. to me, it seems a little more responsible to increase the age of somebody who's going to be there alone. Further down, section, subsection I, um, we added in the second line that the, the applicant must provide sufficient staffing. And in the third line, we added that they needed to make sure their solid waste is accounted for. Just so it's in here and documented that they are required to take care of all the trash. That was not existing in the current ordinance.
We have a retainer for them to make sure that they clean up afterwards, uh, a deposit for this purpose? That might be a thought, is a deposit.
There is current, not one, no.
But if you took a deposit, then you'd have some money in hand and that would be refunded at the conclusion when they've cleaned up the site completely to our satisfaction.
The only thing about that is the, in this instance, the site is usually the entire trail system. So it's not just one park or.
But I guess the question would, if they mark it with, um, uh, flagging or banding around the trees, do we want any of that left out in the, in the trail system afterwards is my question.
Well, they already have the, the regulation that they have to remove all that stuff within a certain time period. So we are, I mean, aside from.
I, I do appreciate that we have the requirement for them to remove it, but the question is if they don't, then what is our recourse?
Well, then they'd be in violation of a city ordinance, right, Jason?
Yeah, they could be cited for a violation of city ordinance.
Would it be easier for us administratively to just take a deposit?
Uh, I mean, that, that's something that you gotta, now we've got to deal with the finances of it. We're probably going to need to set up a, someplace to hold that money, uh, in terms of a fund. And, uh, we're going to have to figure out, oh, it, the, I, we'll just need to look into the logistics of it. If that's something the council wants to look at. I mean, sometimes they could, I mean, this gets even more complicated. Some big cities may require posting of a bond or something, but we wouldn't want to have to make a claim on a bond trash. So, uh, uh, I mean, thank you some time and some thinking about other ways we can get compliance, uh.
Do we do, do deposits now for anything that CDS or the street department does? Do we have any deposits there where they are held until the work is completed?
That I can't answer off the top of my head. The court, the, the court takes, you know, bail deposits, but that's, that's entirely different. That's, that's totally unrelated.
Cassie, do you want to talk to Carrie? I suspect she'd have to set up a special restricted account.
I can, yeah.
I don't know what the cost of that would be versus, anyway, if you could have a look at that, that'd be great.
Okay.
If, if I may ask you, if you've got a staging area where the, an event is being held and, uh, I mean, the opportunity for it to be, uh, trashed and a lot of trash left behind, as pointed out, a, a deposit would certainly encourage the, um, the, you know, the cleaning up of an area.
Yeah, we'll have a look at it, Jerry. Okay, so subsection J.
J, no, um, let me see, I lost my page there. Okay, um, this one was created entirely new and it talks about closure of a trail system. So this just says if, um, a trail is deemed necessary to be closed due to an event, it can only be closed for a period of four hours. And this is going to be at the mayor's discretion, whether it should be closed or not. We don't typically close trails for events, so we don't usually run into any issues with this. But in the event that we do, we would restrict it to four hours. And that is also in line with Bentonville's. And then K, the last one just says no building or structures of any kind can be erected during the event without consent from the city, also created new. And this was just something that also was included in Bentonville's that kind of threw in there as just a, you know, just in case. I don't know of any situation where we've ever had issues with that before, but hopefully we wouldn't encounter that.
One of, one of those pop-up, uh, um, screen-like tent things, is that considered a structure? Uh, or not?
I mean, that might potentially be a temporary structure.
And, and so would we prohibit that as a, as a stand to keep them out of the weather and maybe curtains around?
You, you tell us, if you don't want tents, then we can make sure.
It can only be constructed, uh, with the, uh, permission of the mayor or the mayor's designate.
During the, it, it also talks about during the event. So, uh, I mean, it doesn't say, it doesn't refer to in preparation of an event. If it says that no buildings or structures of any kind can be erected, oh, well, excuse me, for order. So it's either way, excuse me.
Now, most of the bike events usually have a canvas tent on metal legs. And that's where they, they serve the food, serve the water and whatnot. Um, I don't think we want to restrict ourselves against having that.
Does that call as a structure though?
I think I heard Jason say it possibly could be.
Oh, they are structured.
Well, they're, it's a structure. I mean, maybe we need to provide a definition of what a structure is. Uh, or we could specifically say that the prohibition doesn't include temporary tents, pop-up tents, something like that.
Or we could go Steve's idea and just say, uh, at the discretion of the mayor.
Well, that. Standard, you don't want to be too willy nilly. You need to, you need to be able to, why, what, what, if we say that, then we have to have some objective standards as to why the mayor would either grant or deny it. It's not just, so you, we would have to think about the factors as to why it would be granted or not fact, or not granted. It gets a lot more complicated at that point.
Yeah, I would think we should accept out, uh, pop-up tents and, and that kind of a temporary situation.
Great.
Okay, so let me recap here. Um, Cassie, we're going to leave a few things with you. Subsection three of section, uh, twenty-four dash forty-eight on the fees. Section twenty-four fifty-one, subsection A on the type of signs and the thickness. Subsection I to twenty-four fifty-one, chat with Carrie about, the logistics of setting up a prepayment for reimbursement later.
That, that one is a, that one is a deposit because that's a cleanup, isn't it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I hear you.
And then the final one, um, is what we just discussed, which is K. And it sounds as if, uh, pop-up tents would be, um, allowed, I think I'm hearing most council members say that. So if we can change that as well.
Those are, those are pretty common when you see the golf course tournaments on the Bella Vista, uh, golf courses, you'll see a lot of those in various sizes. Some are very small and some are like, uh, eight feet or 10 feet in dimension, so.
That's very true.
I will work on.
On this, Cassie, I thank you for it, thank you.
Yeah, you have any questions?
I got a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, where, where the, um, what Cassie is reading from? Apparently I can't find it in the packets that I have available. Where would that, where was that?
It's in there. It's on page, uh, seventy-three is what we're looking at now of the ninety pages in the packet, Jerry.
And Jerry, you have to get that from the website, not from your mail attachment.
That's where I'm at, is the website.
Okay, you, do you see ninety pages?
I see ninety pages.
Okay, seventy-three, I think, is what they say.
Seventy-three is the last item we've been talking about, I and J and K.
If I had a Jerry?
Seventy-two, seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm happy, thanks.
Good, okay, though. Alright, Cassie, thank you again, and we'll let you get back with your family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to jump now to, um, item F, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a guaranteed maximum price amendment to the contract with Kleiner Construction Management, Inc. in the amount of two million four hundred and fifty thousand for the construction of fire station number three. So for those of you that haven't been involved in building in the past, before you can start your construction, the last step is to have a guaranteed maximum price from the construction company. For example, when we built fire station number three, Kleiner Construction again was the construction company or the overseer. And we came in with, uh, two million two hundred and fifty thousand as a guaranteed maximum price. And it actually came in some fifty-nine thousand less than that. The guaranteed maximum price, and I'm going to ask Mark Kleiner, who's the president of Kleiner Construction, to walk us through this in a second, contains all sorts of contingencies and other things, but it has not been value engineered. And what value engineering does, and I imagine Larry knows this, is as you're going through the construction process, if you notice that some of the, um, trades want to put in fifty widgets and we don't want those fifty widgets at all, then you take it out. And of course, there's all sorts of reasons why they'd like to have the fifty widgets in there because they, the architect usually gets a commission on the, um, on the total price of the project. So it's very important that there is a distinction that you understand between the guaranteed maximum price and the ongoing value engineering. Chief, if I may, I'm just going to hand it over to Mark.
That's fine.
Mr. Kleiner, thank you again for joining us. It seems just like yesterday we were doing this for fire station number four. I'm going to turn the floor over to you so you can walk us through this, please.
Sure, be happy to. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Appreciate you all, uh, pushing me up the agenda a bit. Uh, it looks like it might be a little bit of a lengthy evening, but, so I do appreciate that. I guess, um, to recap a little bit where we are, I'm sure most of you have been out to the site. Uh, the city council authorized us to start the earthwork construction, uh, last fall so that we could get that, uh, performed during better weather. And, uh, I think as of today, we actually reached essentially the end of phase one. The waterline extension for fire hydrant, uh, was, has been put in and it's being tested as we speak. So we've got a few days more before we'll be finished. So it's good timing for us to, uh, to get approval to go ahead and get started on phase two, which would be the rest of the construction. Uh, to address the construction management and guaranteed maximum price, uh, that's our preferred way of delivery. The other way is to, uh, have an architect and engineering team come in and design a facility and then we bid it. And that's the price. And there's really no opportunity to speak of to look at options and alternatives that might save money. And because this project is, uh, dovetails with the bond issue and, and the finances are somewhat intertwined between this facility and the fire training center, it's been our goal from the beginning to work with the architects and engineers and keep this budget as low as possible. And so that the savings at the discretion of the city council could be pushed over into the budget for the fire training center. And so as we currently sat, the, 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 the G max, we'll, we'll call it the GMP, guaranteed maximum price, is, uh, sat at two million. We're asking that that be set at two million four hundred and fifty thousand. That includes all of the construction for phase two and phase one, which will be rolled up into this price. Uh, monies that have already been paid out. It also includes a contingency currently, and it's in the proposal that we sent you all of a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, the budget also includes some things that we didn't have in fire station number four, uh, to the tune of almost a quarter of a million dollars. And, and that's, um, furniture, fixtures, equipment, um, IT, IT equipment, um, air compressors, appliances, extractor, dryers, pretty much everything that Chief Sims needs to open the station. There may be a few items that, that, uh, will still have to be purchased, but by and large, we're, we're not just giving you a fire station, we're giving you a fully furnished, fully equipped. All you gotta do is bring the people in and, and trucks and, you know, rolling stock. So, uh, we are currently beginning, we, we went out to bid, um, not sure of the exact date, but it was the end of December. We gave everyone because of the holidays, just, uh, and COVID and all of the various things. We gave the bidders three weeks and we've received those bids and we've been processing those and reviewing them, asking questions because there's always, you know, some, some exclusions that get stated that we need to look into. We've pretty much got that drilled down to a, a, where we're ready to start issuing subcontracts to various subcontractors, um, as soon as the city council authorizes us to proceed. I do expect, well, let me back up. I want to say this in a positive way. I do expect, as the mayor suggested, that we are going to discover and offer a list of items that we can do to save money. Again, I'm looking at it as every dollar we save will be able to be a dollar we can spend on the fire training center. Ten thousand that we say will go into the fire training center budget, hopefully. We have a number of those things already being discussed. It's, it's better when I can say to a subcontractor, you're the apparent low bidder. Now, give us some ideas on things that you can do to reduce costs. We've already received some of those things. I don't expect that our list will be nearly as lengthy as it was for station number four, but that's because we weren't involved in the, working with the design team. And so we'd had to do all of our value engineering with the plans that were created by the design team, which, which in, the good thing about that was there was a lot to pick from. And, uh, as the, as the mayor suggested, there were, you know, thousands, tens and hundreds of thousands almost of savings that we could do and still have the facility do everything it needed to do. And we, and we didn't cut corners, we didn't reduce quality, we just did things that made sense. There won't be as much of that because we've been working with the design team from day one, but there are some things. In fact, one that I'll give you, that I see Derek is, I think, listening in, uh, is part of the landscape requirements. I was talking to the chief today. I said, we, we might have some opportunities there because we've got about thirty-five thousand square feet of sod that the engineers showed on the plans. That's an item that we always want to look at for time of year because at certain times of year, we can hydro seed at about a twenty percent of the cost of, of sod. And, you know, the end result is you get a stand of grass that you're going to have to mow. Um, doesn't matter that it came up from seed rather than being put in, put in place as sod, but it saves a good chunk of change. That's the kinds of things that we look at. You still get grass, still have to mow it, but it's just less expensive. Uh, and again, that's very dependent on time of year, but I think in the, in our, in our current scheduling, where our timing is very good for that. I'm, I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions that anybody has, uh, regarding this. And so Larry, I see your hand up, so fire away.
My, my question for you is that cost of ownership can be, uh, very debilitating when you're looking at public facilities like this. And my question would be is what have we done to reduce our? And my question would be is what have we done to reduce our cost of operation of the facility for heating, lighting, and electrical loads?
Good question. Um, let's talk about that kind of in the order that you, you, you put it out there or in, in the way that I remember you put it out there. Uh, heating, as all of you know, that probably live in Bella Vista is a challenge because it's propane typically, or electric. In this case, it's a combination. We use for the heating and air conditioning system, a dual fuel system whereby we have, if you, all of you that may have heat pumps, you, you know that when the electric strips kick in, your meter spins great, a great deal faster. A lot of energy usage there. In this case, we have propane uh to produce the heat. We do have electric strips, but typically they don't, they do not kick in nearly so uh quickly as they would on an all-electric system. And propane is still a more efficient fuel for heating, space heating than um, than all-electric. All of the electric, all of the heating equipment that we're using is all high efficiency, ninety-eight percent or, or greater efficiency. And I'm trying to think, we use the, in the apparatus bays, we use the um uh radiant tube heating. And radiant tube heating uh is a more, it's a little more expensive to buy, but over the long term, it, it radi, the radiant heat heats up the floors and the surfaces of the apparatus bay. It's a much more comfortable heat. But it's less expensive. In fact, uh, we all, that's one of the areas that we always reduce what the engineers tell us to put in there. And we've had, we've had three bay fire stations and that can operate on two radiant tubes. And a lot of times the engineers will show four or five of them. Uh, I, 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 I'm not sure I remember for sure, but I think we've got, Chief, do you remember? I think we've got two. We, we, we're gonna do two in this current facility, which will be more than enough to heat. Uh, as for light, well, as for lighting, if I may, all the lighting is a hundred percent LED. And um, and, and we looked at LED lighting in terms of not doing too much of it because the light fixtures themselves can be expensive. It kind of remains to be seen. We try to stay with the major manufacturers, not buy things from China or wherever uh that might be prone to fail. So we hope that the LED lighting will be, it's generally not the LEDs that fail, the light emitting diodes, it's the drivers. And the better quality manufacturers use better quality drivers. So, you know, the lighting should be good for I, I, I think all of it is anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand hours, which is quite a long time. Anyway, Larry, you got another question?
I, I do, and that relates to the heating and cooling system. Probably the most efficient that you can find is geothermal. It's a little higher on the front end, but it has a longevity factor that contributes to its cost effectiveness and its operating cost is very low uh compared to other means like gas heat, LP gas, I'm assuming because we don't have the natural gas in the community, and certainly more efficient uh than electric is, so the heat pumps. So I'm wondering, did you look at that at all and, and if, if not?
We did, and I, and I don't question any of what you just said. And we have, we have looked at uh geothermal systems in the past. And generally speaking, because of the initial cost, they, they tend to get value engineered out, if you will, or just owners decide they don't want to pay that kind of money. Uh, but the other thing too, in this case, is initial costs kind of took precedent for us somewhat over long-term cost. Again, because we were trying to make, we were trying to put in good quality systems, but save some money to be able to be, to be pushed over into the fire training center. And so I, I, the engineers did look at it, but we didn't get too far down that road, Larry and I. You know, it's, I, I don't know that it's at this point in time, something we could roll back into this.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're beyond the road of return, but I, I'm disappointed that you didn't look at it more closely.
Well, I can tell you that depending upon who you talk to, there, I think the jury's still out a little bit on the longevity and, and the service requirements of these systems. And I, I, I'll be honest with you, it's, I, I couldn't sit here and try to tell you exactly what those numbers are, but generally speaking, it costs more to put it in. It costs more to maintain it. Then, and there's, there's not a great many people who are really expert in putting those systems are in, and therefore um, and not just any HVAC company can, can bid on and put those systems in and maintain them properly. So we, we don't push them. I wouldn't discourage it if it came up early, but I think, I think we are beyond that point of.
I, I would tend to agree with you, but I would, I would disagree with your comment about the operating cost. You'll find that the operating cost overall is going to be much cheaper than others, other systems will be.
Well, they, they are getting more efficient. Uh, you're, you're, you're still dealing essentially with a heat pump that rather than pumping heat out of the air, it's pumping heat out of the groundwater. So um, I, I.
And, and I say that because Cooper Community School uh is heated and cooled with heat pumps over there, I'm told. Uh, quite a number of ground wells, but there are many different opportunities for the uh looping system for it. So I'm.
And let me tell you this, that there's another aspect that I didn't mention, but it, but it, it pertains. If you're dealing with a, a structure that just needs to be heated or cooled for that matter, but heated, I think there's a very good argument to consider. But in this case, we're gonna have, we have two, we have a pair of propane tanks, and one of the very most important things for this location and, and even just in general in Bella Vista is having a uh backup generator. We have a full backup generator that provides a hundred percent of the power needs for the station. This, that's uh propane powered. If we were to go to a groundwater heat pump type system, which is basically uses power, electric power, that forces us into a diesel generator, which adds a good deal of cost and, and service that, that you don't have with a gas-powered generator. The other thing too is we use the propane to heat uh wa, water, which I know you, an offshoot of the groundwater is you can get hot water. But we also use it for the radiant tube heaters, which are a very good, efficient way to heat apparatus bay. So it's, it's, I don't know, you gotta roll that whole package out and assess what's best for this facility. So you're right, in a lot of cases, it's, it's a good in, a good solution to, to heating and cooling a, a structure. I just don't think it's quite there where we'd need it to be because of the other things that we would then not, not be able to do. And I, that's kind of the best way I can put it at this point.
Great. Does anybody else have any uh questions for Mr. Kleiner?
What, what's the, the completion target date for the fire station?
Doug, we have uh, we have right now uh set October first as our completion date, which is about eight and a half months from now. That's, we still have some permitting to get stepped through uh government red tape. You guys know about that. But hopefully we'll get that done in the next couple of weeks and be ready to start by February one.
One, one last question. I think it'll be the last question. What impact what impact will this have by raising the uh maximum price of the contract on this project? Uh, will that have any impact at all on the training center uh monies that we need?
Um.
In other words, are we over committing on this one and will end up being under committed on the next project?
No, I, I, I think I can say no, and the chief may want to weigh in on this i- if you'd like, but I would, my, my impression is, as you all know, or any of you that buy anything that's related to construction, we do have price increases. So it is, it is important that we get going on that fire training center as soon as possible to, you know, kind of keep our, our inflationary measures. And who knows with COVID and a new, you know, administration, what all we're going to be looking at, but we're, I, I think we're, we probably all know that we need to go as quickly as we can. And I know the fire chief is working hard on trying to secure a piece of property. Um, but, but no, I don't, we'll be able to do the fire training center. We may have to do some things that are slightly different than what was sort of programmed in, but we're just talking to the chief this morning and, and uh the fire training tower itself is, is, is a, is a must-have. I think the driver training course, perhaps so. And then we need some kind of a support building where they can have uh some ancillary meetings and uh some storage, maybe, maybe apparatus storage, but I, I think we'll be good, but I, I want to try to save money where we can, but sometimes the things I want to save money on, the chief doesn't want to save money on. I don't mean to throw him under the bus, but, but he, I get it. I mean, he wants to have a station that's comparable to the other stations. And so we, we certainly don't want to do anything that's any less attractive or any less functional than the other fire stations around town.
Well, Mark, Mark, you do have a good track record of saving us money. So I have absolutely no doubt that you will stick at it for both projects. And you have probably one of the best architectural design firms um as opposed to last time with number four. This firm, um Bunny and his crew have been building fire stations for decades. And um, they usually do not overstep, but it's nice to have your cautious eye looking at it as well. So thank you.
Well, they do, they do, and thank you for saying that, but they, uh, JVP Architects is very responsive to the needs of firefighters, and they've designed, gosh, dozens and dozens and dozens of fire stations around the state of Arkansas and elsewhere. Um, th- they're very responsive with, whenever we ask them to study something and get us feedback as it relates to code issues and uh that sort of thing. They've just been really, really excellent to work with, and they turn out good sets of plans that we get good, accurate bids that we can hold our subcontractors to. So many times these days you get working drawings and specifications that are so poorly drawn that you know, you end up in a, a battle with subcontractors over change orders and that sort of thing. We hate change. We just despise them. So because it.
You're not alone in that, Matt.
Okay, I think the chief has something to add here.
Yeah, one thing I want to add, Larry, you talked about energy efficiency and so forth. Is that one of the things we've done with Fire Station Number Four was the, was the propane tankless hot water heaters. And they've worked perfect for that station for the last four years. So that's something else we're incorporating into the station as well. We're not heating water continuously, it heats on demand. So that's another savings.
Okay, good. All right, if there are no more questions. Mr. Kleiner, thank you once again for joining us. I look forward to the next GMP discussion with you on the fire training center. I'll let you get back to your family.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll start going back to the front of the, of the agenda. And we'll start with the first ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty twenty dash thirty six oh ninety-eight, county parcel number sixteen dash thirty one zero forty-three dash zero 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 from P one, which is the conservation district to R one, which is single-family residential. I draw your attention to the memo that Mr. Kelly sent out to you today, just reminding me how we have to look at this. Um, this is a clean slate. So regardless of what happened in the commission, we now look at this with clean eyes and um I have asked Derek Lynn, who's our senior planner, to um present this to us. And Taylor, I guess perhaps you have a, a part in this as well. Good to see you.
Hi, I'm just here to watch and learn Derek present his rezon. So I'm taking notes.
Great stuff. Okay. Derek, the floor is yours, sir.
Pressure's on. Okay, and can you hear me okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you. So the property before the city council on the agenda, this, a- a- as you may be aware, is at the corner of Trafalgar and Castleford over on the east side. This is just upstream. Uh, Pinion Creek runs through this property. It's just upstream of uh, of Lake Anne. And it's downstream of Lake Brittany, the overflow of that. And I'm going to attempt to share an exhibit here in a minute, but I'll mention that the, the tax ID parcel includes a greater bit of land. Um, that's not a part of the application that was heard by the planning commission. But um, it is the, the nine point nine three acre tract just southwest of the Trafalgar and Castleford um intersection, and then it also borders Windermere on the west side. And just a second, and I'll do the, the screen that I mentioned. Okay, this is the um, this is straight from the packet, so you'll have a copy of this, but this was used at the beginning of the um commission meetings, and this was provided at the beginning of the staff report. You can see here, the, the yellow on this parcel is showing the approximate area of the FEMA floodplain that runs through this parcel. This is Zone A, um special flood hazard area. It's considered, um, some refer to it as the one hundred-year flood, flood zone. The land outside of it uh that is, that is to the northeast of that is, it's about a two and a quarter acre uh piece of greenland on a higher, higher ground. Uh, I am going to try to be um quick so that there's time for the mayor, Jason, others to jump in and um also for any questions that we have during, during um tonight's meeting. So I want to jump down just so whether now or later, as you all are considering this item, um, just touch on a few more high points on this. So down in the staff report um from planning staff, you'll, you'll see the reasons why we provided the recommendation that we did. Um, basically, in a nutshell, the applicant um requested to convert the whole zoning district, the, the whole piece of land from P one parks and conservation to R one, single-family residential. Through um use of the available maps that we have and data, um and through the definitions that we have in the zoning code regarding the intent of these two different zoning districts, staff found um the recommendation that you see in this planning commission packet, um which was a hybrid zone between um uh leaving part of it as P one and rezoning part of it as residential. When the, the line that we were using with that recommendation was based on the FEMA flood zone, so basically saying anything within that, keep that as um parks, conservation, and rezone other lands as residential. Now, when Cooper was made aware of that recommendation, they then came to staff in the planning commission and said, hold up, if we may, we'd like to present an alternate, another hybrid proposal, one that, one that we prefer. And so now I'm going to share that for you all so that you can um see a copy of that.
And Derek, let me add while you're pulling that up, they, during the planning commission meeting, uh, changed their app, changed their request and application to conform to this modification. And it is this modification that the actual planning commission considered. And it is the appeal of that decision that is in front of you right now is this modified uh uh map that Derek's about to explain to you.
Thank you, Jason. That's very helpful. So um, as you can see here, this outlined in the, the bold area that I'm using my mouse on right now, you can that I'm using my mouse on right now, you can see this is the outline of the properties. You can see Castleford on the north, Trafalgar on the east, and then, and then Windermere right here with the cul-de-sac on the southwest side. So for our reference, they have highlighted the pieces of land in yellow that they were proposing and the, and the planning commission voted on to keep as, as as P1 parks and conservation. And then the remainder, which is identified here, this is a proposed lot split, which we have not reviewed yet, but they use it as an exhibit. This lot five, which you can see is, is labeled as 7.68 acres of the 9.93. That's what they're proposing to, to be zoned as, as residential. And I also, did this change? Do you all now see the, how it doesn't have yellow in the slide? Okay, perfect. So I'm just going to end, if I may, on, on this one. So that the, the beauty here is this is a clearer image. We no longer have the yellow, obviously, but you all can now see approximately, if you want to, for reference, you can see where the, the floodplain line is on here. That X is out of the floodplain when it's in the X zone. And then the A, that's the, that is the, the floodplain. But jumping back, you can see the yellow versus the white on, on this exhibit.
Derek, you sent me the one, you know, you had the yellow portions highlighted. And, and you can do this after, certainly not right now, but that, the other one that you just showed, that shows where the floodplain is later, I mean, after the meeting maybe. Zone X and zone A, so you can see it, because you can't see it on this one.
Okay. Mr. Fowler, can you repeat? What was the question or request that you?
I just could send this page right here when you get a chance.
Okay. You bet. And then consult with Jason today. We also discussed how for the next packet, we'd make sure that you guys have in advance of the next meeting, both this one that I have up right now, and then the one with the yellow so that y'all can have that.
Now, Derek and Doug, we did consult with the comprehensive land use plan. And we also consulted with our friends over in Gould Evans. And this property, as I understand it, is surrounded by R1 so that it conforms to the other areas for land use. Is that correct?
I agree with that. And that was something that we looked at in the considerations of the recommendations was that this is, you know, it's not, if we were looking at a C something or an I something, that would not, that would likely, you know, that might not be considered compatible. But, but, but yeah, this is all of these smaller lots that are in these, these blocks surrounding this property, they're going to be zoned residential. And then these, these common areas, the larger tracts in between them are going to be zoned typically P, P1.
That's the POA common land?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions? Sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, Derek, I know it's in the packet, but could you just make sure you point out and we'll get into more detail when we are in the regular meeting and there are minutes of this meeting, but of the, of the types of uses that are allowed in P1, it's more than just park. There are several uses for P1.
Right. That's a, that's a great point. And I can definitely.
And, and, and you don't need to read those off right now. I just, I just want to, I guess I just want to flip it out for the, for the members to, to look in the packet because it's, it's in there. It's delineated in there. And I can answer, answer more of those questions at the meeting. But it's not just a park. It, it, there, there are several things that P1 can be used for in our zoning code.
Yeah, I'm looking at it now. It could be a cemetery, clubs, parks, recreation, safety utilities. Trails for biking and cycling. So that's in your packet.
I have a question.
Sir?
A couple of them actually. And in fact, I'll open with a comment. This, this package that staff put together, I've, I've had opportunity as a former member of the planning commission to see a lot of packages. It was really thorough, laid out, very, very helpful to be able to kind of get up to speed and understand what the dilemma is, what the, what the ask is, and what some of the challenges are associated with that. So staff did make a recommendation, as Derek was just explaining. It was, it was put on the table, but it was never voted on. And I wonder, Jason, do we have the option of considering what the staff's recommendation was, their original recommendation?
The council may, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. The council, the council has the authority to zone the property as it sees fit. You, the, the, and thank you for answering, asking that question because it does give me an opportunity to kind of say, there, there's, there's, there's kind of a thought that this may be kind of a different situation than we normally do with a rezoning. And it's really not. In this particular situation, the planning commission did not give you a favorable recommendation. They gave you, they, they didn't do that. Sometimes they do, but it's still up to the council. Sometimes you could have the planning commission recommend it to you and the council may say no. Other situations, you may have the planning commission say, you know, we don't, we're not going to recommend this to you. The city council could say, yes, we are going to go ahead. So that's where you have your discretion. Now, the appeal, technically, the appeal was of the denial of this modified request that with the yellow that we just looked at, where we separated the parcel into two different zones. And, and so if you adopt the, if you sort of go ahead and grant that rezoning, I think it's, you would be granting the rezoning according to that modified application. You can rezone the whole parcel. You can deny it. You can change the line. You can follow the staff's recommendation. You can do what you believe you need to do as long as it's not arbitrary, capricious and is rational. Now, one thing the council may want to do, and I don't know if Mr. Gross Close is on the call or you may, he may be on the next meeting, but you may ask them what it is you want, what, what it is they want the council to vote on. You may get that. And then if, if, if you do get clarity or a different response, then we might need to make a modification if that's something the council wanted to consider. But the short answer, it, it may be too late for a short answer, is that the council maintains the authority to zone the property as it sees fit, taking into consideration the lawful things you can think of and in so doing, not acting arbitrarily and acting rationally. So you do have that authority.
Yep. Okay. The, the final comment, if I, I'll try to exhaust mine and then I'll let everybody else have a shot. But, you know, as far as the surrounding zones there and that, much of that is residential. I'm, I'm not sure. That sways me one way or the other. I think of Central Park in the middle of New York City. And, and that what they did was they protected the park area as a park, knowing that there's commercial and residential surrounding it. Nobody made the case, I guess, well, that shouldn't be a park because look what all's around it. So I'm not sure I understand kind of the weight of why looking at what surrounds it is, is useful here. My final question would be then probably also for Jason. Jason, we got in our package, we, it was included with the, from the applicant representative, a very detailed layout of, of why we should change the zone according to the applicant's request. And I don't, I'm not smart enough to, to understand all of that. I, I trust they feel like they're making a really strong case to get the application approved the, the way they want it to. But how do we factor that as, as layman? How do we factor all of those details into our decision process?
Well, the, the point of the letter was to appeal the decision and to get the matter before you for consideration. That was the point of the letter. Now, it's an 11 page letter. And certainly they do want the property zones so that they can carry out their plans. I, I could, I, I don't really think you want to hear me go point by point over 11 pages of this, nor do I think it would be particularly helpful. I don't agree with the legal conclusions, much of it. I'm not sure we need to even get to this, a lot of it, because your considerations are whether to rezon it according to the application or the modified application or deemed fit by the council, taking into consideration the factors which you can consider. They, they have made some legal arguments that they're not subject to, their private property is not subject to our zoning authority, which I don't agree with at all. That they have noticed, they've raised some notice objections regarding the, the, the existing P1 zoning, which would have been put in place more than a decade ago. I think there are going to be time issues with that and, and, and other things. I, I, like I said, there's, there's a lot and I'm not, I'm not doing their argument justice by, by not being more detailed in a response. But, but I think these are issues that are, would come to light in case we end up in litigation. I don't think that those are necessarily factors that you need to consider. Because they have come to you in accordance with our zoning code to apply for this and to appeal that decision to you. And they have a recommendation, which you certainly have every right to consider. And as long as you are not arbitrary and capricious and you are rational in your decisions, the law is going to support what you do. Now, having said all of that, I will say this, and this is my general Bella Vista caveat that I've said for years when it comes to things. We're unique up here. There's really no question in my mind, a city has a right to exercise zoning. Municipal zoning is something that clearly municipal governments in the city, in the state of Arkansas have. Our, our circumstance and being a privately planned community before there was ever a city, I think does raise concerns when the city comes in with a zoning plan. Because if, and, and I do not believe this to be the case here, but if the city enacted any regulation or particularly zoning, which had the effect of making a property worth zero, worth nothing, then the city would have done what's called a taking and the courts would require us to make just compensation. In other words, to buy the property. But we're not doing, by exercising reasonable zoning, we're not conducting a taking. Now, they have a different opinion of this. I, I'm just going to tell you. And, and, and they have, we have a lot of things that we've never had a judge tell us before. I'm just telling you based on my training and experience and the best as I know the law, that we can, we can carry out this zoning without being accused of, of a taking. I think, I think the question about the existing zoning, since that's been in place for over 10 years, I think there are a lot of issues if there's a challenge to that from their side. Just related to time, if nothing else. But as I pointed out to you, you know, P, a P1 zoning has multiple uses and it's not just a park. And they could, they could do certain things and be in conformance with our zoning code right now. It wouldn't even require a rezoning. But in, in any, in, in any event, they, they, they're seeking a rezoning and a rezoning can occur. I think that where the city may come into issue, and I, and I said this before we got into our new master plan discussion back with prior directors of CDS, that before we got Doug and, and, and I've, we've talked about this off and on, maybe some of you've heard me say it. If we came in with a zoning plan and we, and we decided that, for example, we want all of the Chelsea Loop, all the properties on the Chelsea Loop to now be some sort of a, a low density commercial, because we have this new idea of what we want to see in the city of Bella Vista. Well, those properties are, are privately covenanted and restricted as such, where they can't be built like that. They, they, so no one could legally do anything with their property. They couldn't build a house because if they did that, they'd be in violation of our code. And, and they can't build a, a commercial property on it because they'd be in violation of their covenants. So no one's going to pick, buy that piece of property because you can't do anything with it and you would have rendered it valueless, basically practically valueless. So in a circumstance like that, if the city did something like that, I would be concerned about a taking. But here we're not doing anything necessarily in contravention like that. I think we have every right to talk about things like density of residential in residential areas or density of, or, or the severity of, of commercial uses in areas. And so private restrictions may say it can be used for commercial. The city may come in and say, yeah, it's commercial and it's only going to be, you know, it's going to be low density, professional office type commercial. It's not going to be big box retail or something. I mean, we're, I'm, I'm talking hypothetically. So we have the right to do some things. There's a line. If we cross it, we're going to get in trouble. I can't tell you exactly where that line is, other than to tell you that if we do something that's going to make property worthless through regulation, no matter what it is, then we're going to have a problem. And so, but, but I think what we're doing here does not cross that line and nor have we crossed it previously. Now, that, I fully expect Cooper may have a different answer to that, but that's what my, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I appreciate that, Jason. That's, that's kind of a relief to hear that advice. What it tells me, the way I interpret that is, as a council, we can make a decision in this case on, on what's best, what we feel like is best for Bella Vista, best for our residents. We don't have to do it kind of under the burden of concern that there might be some lawsuit in the future that would render us all wet. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that your, your advice really is, we can play this straightforward and do the right thing for Bella Vista.
And, and the, I mean, you, you, you are limiting what you can consider. And, and I've given you, given you that in that memo. It's not, it's not, it's not everything under the sun you could consider, but there are a lot of things you can consider. And, and having said all of that, let me add one final note. I can't ever guarantee we might not get sued. We might believe we're in the right. I can tell you that state law says that appeals of denials of rezoning are only granted by the circuit court when they're arbitrary, capricious or lack rational basis. So whatever you do, make sure that during our meeting, there's good explanation for it. There's good rationale about how it, it ties back to these, to these zoning considerations, be it to grant it or deny it, either way. So I would, I would just advise you of that. And if you've considered anything that's rational, and that's a pretty, legally, that's a low bar. Just don't be irrational. But as long as you are rational and looking at factors that you can consider, I'm, I feel like we're in a very good spot to go to court. So for what it's worth, I offer you that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I had a question. So my understanding is the whole tract is 9.93 acres. And Cooper's hybrid proposal is to make 7.68 acres R1. I wasn't clear on the staff's hybrid proposal that predated Cooper's. Was that saying two and a quarter acres should be R1? Or, or what was that exactly, Derek?
That's, that's a good question. I had calculated two and a quarter approximately north of floodplain, so up towards the intersection of the two streets. And then basically what we had said was anything outside of the floodplain, north or south, would get zoned as residential. And so the bit that remains south of the creek, I had done that at one time and I think it was about another acre down there. So that would put you at approximately two, excuse me, three, three and a quarter as residential with the difference of the 9.93 as being the P1.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, Derek, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Larry.
No, go ahead.
So the way, you know, it's noted on the, the map that you had a prior, it's lot five something. So, but, so, so it makes it appear or could appear as though that would be just one lot for one residential structure, right? But actually, this could be further subdivided into additional homes requested, right? It could be broken up.
That is correct. So the clarification that they offered on their original application was that they had a buyer who wanted to build a house. However, as we all know, that buyer, if it works out for them, that's, that's great. But they could also change plan and sell it to you or me in a year or six months. And then we might decide that we want to do something different with it that fits within the R1 zoning district. And, and yes, to kind of get back to your question just then, subject to the subdivision regulations of our code, one could take that lot five that I have on the screen right now and, and divide it into whatever meets the, the subdivision requirements for that zoning district. So for example, R1 allows a new lot to be created to be down as small as a third of an acre. And a third of an acre is similar to these lots that we have. Um, and a third of an acre is similar to these lots that we have. You know, that's not the exact acres, but that, it, these are around a third of an acre typically, these, these existing lots. This, this one I'm pointing to here, that's probably more like a half of an acre, point four, something like that. But, but, but yes, one could come through here and say, I want to split lot five into an, another minor, you know, subdivision of, of something. Um, and they would be held to regulations of our subdivision code, which as applicable streets, utilities, whatever will be required for, um, a subdivision.
Uh, secondarily, yeah, just to, just to comment maybe more than a question, but so, I mean, it's been said already. I mean, this, currently it is private property. Uh, it's, it's not been designated like as a park per se. That's just a zoning classification. I mean, the owner of this property could come in and basically put up no trespassing signs and not allow anyone on the property. You know, in the future, if, if they so desire to do that, and is that also correct?
Uh, Doug, I would tell you that that, that's correct. Ex, I, I would just point out that there, before any of this application, part of our trail system runs along the west side.
Yeah.
And there are existing agreements in place. So that
I understand that.
That would remain open, but
Right.
Yes, this is privately owned property. It's not, it's not POA common property. It is Cooper reserved private property. You're absolutely correct.
Hey Larry, I think you had a question.
If Doug has done, I do, I have two questions actually. Relative to the developability of that seven point six acre track that's shown on your map, Derek. Uh, can they develop anything in, in zone A?
They, they can if they, um, so it's not as easy to develop in zone A. And Larry, you're, um, you, you're somewhat familiar with this, I know. Um, but basically we have, um, floodplain regulations in chapter 105. And it requires that, um, certain greater restrictions, um, are placed and, and, and engineering is done such that if someone wants to build a house in zone A, um, some sort of mitigation has to be done or a study by the, by the engineer has to be done that passes um, the floodplain regulations such that, um, flooding situations are not made worse on persons and properties up and downstream of the, of the proposal. So in theory, yes, you can develop in an A. It's just, it's more involved and, um, it often requires mitigation to make sure that, uh, a floodplain is, is, is not getting worse for someone um, in another area.
So do we have, do we have a floodplain study that sets flood stages along this corridor here?
I don't, so with this being a zone A, so you know, if this were a zone AE, we would have a base flood elevation, uh, mapped here, even by FEMA would, would have that available on their interactive. With this being an A, that just means the base flood elevations have not been provided. Of course, the applicant would be on the applicant to provide that engineering and that data, um, if they wanted to do anything and then that would be, um, viewed. Um, but, but I don't think that, uh, at least this, I don't think this paid anyone to do a detailed study of this, this area. It's possible the, the property owner could have some.
Do we, do we have a zoning classification that's called floodplain and floods, floodway and floodplain? In our code?
So, so no, we do not have, um, this, the floodplain is more like a geography, just like, uh, anything else. We don't have a, um, we don't have a zoning district called that. However, the, the P one zoning district that we're actually discussing with this application, it does provide that its purpose is to, um, protect and enhance certain areas and certain, certain, um, certain resources. And it does mention in black and white, it does mention, uh, floodplains and streams as some of those examples of things that it's meant to, um, to enhance and protect.
So if we were to rezone all of the area of lot five as shown on your map here, uh, retaining, uh, P one in lot six and then the soft trail in the area south of the south trail, which is the southeast corner of this property, uh, that would be what their applicant is asking for now.
So kind of circling back to Jason's point, uh, a bit ago, I would say that, um, what, what, what we, it is safe to say is that, um, they asked the planning commission to vote on, on this proposal that you see here with, has the yellow and to keep the as conservation and to zone the white as residential. Um, then the planning commission voted on that. They denied that. And so the most direct appeal that I could do is to respond to this, this exhibit with the yellow on it. And, um, however, um, y'all are more flexible with what you, um, see fit. Um, and how, which direction you want to go, as he explained a minute ago.
So if we were to, uh, agree to, uh, uh, rezone lot five, as it's shown here, the non-yellow areas to residential R one, what is the use that can be done by any development developer, uh, owner in the A zone A area? Can, can you take as an example, the western area on Castle Ford Drive here that's in zone A and plot that as a lot and develop it? If it's entirely in zone A.
You, 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 you can definitely plot it as a residential lot because that's allowed by right in the R one district.
Derek, would they not have to, I mean, people do have the ability to, subject to our stormwater requirements, actually bring property out of the floodplain and get the maps revised, don't they? I mean, it really, it's a matter of how much money you want to spend, whether it becomes a marketable thing to do or not. Is that fair? I don't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is that fair to say?
They don't have a, Cooper would, or property owner would not have a requirement to revise the map and get it out of the floodplain. Property owners do have that option. It's a rig process with FEMA that one can go through. Um, that is an option.
Okay.
Uh, like the requirement to, to build a house i- in the R one zone in that A, the minimum requirement by the city of Bella Vista would be, um, to receive an approved floodplain development permit to build whatever structure it is they're proposing. And for example, your, your finished floor elevation of your house might have to be two feet above base flood elevation. I think that's, um, I think that's what our code requires. And so in other words, um, hey engineer, what is the typical base flood of a hundred year flood through here? And then to make the structure safe, you're going to have to fill up two feet above that. However, when you do that, you're, you're changing, you're putting a new mass of earth in the, in the floodplain. And that's going to then affect how the waters, um, go through that area. So mitigation, uh, either side of that would be required to, to make that legal, basically.
And, and I, and I'll add this, this may not be there, Derek, but of course, if you're a cash builder, it wouldn't be a concern, but good luck getting financing from a bank, trying to build a house in the middle of a flood zone. Um, I, I think you're going to have that, there are going to be a lot of practical issues, but, but if you're a, um, a cash builder, uh, that may not be a concern, but there, there would be financing issues, I believe. Any event, that, that kind of goes beyond the consideration that you need to be able to make in terms of the, the zoning issue. Certainly flooding, a flooding consideration is a, definitely a consideration, but finance is not.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
A comment.
Certainly, go ahead.
I'm, I'm seeing like I'm, something's been lost here. I'm just, uh, understanding that this, um, was a petition to rezone this piece of property for a man to, for a person to build a house on. Um, and we've discussed the potential lawsuits, uh, like it's, uh, gone way beyond that. I'm like, I'm missing something here.
We
Well, Jerry, I can tell you that, that, um, the, 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 what, how many houses or what house they, that's not been brought up and it's not part of our, uh,
Consideration.
The, the development itself is not particularly a consideration. Now, you're talking about a certain acreage of potential R one. And our code tells us that you can have so many units of R one, given so many acres. So that's the kind of thing you could look at. Somebody might come in and, and subdivide or something. We don't know that. Uh, but, but in terms of the, the, the property is own P one, uh, so they, you, you can't, that, they apparently wanted to put R one, uh, an R one use on it, whatever that is. And there's a list of R one. And so they came to us to rezone it. Uh, the planning commission did not recommend that. And for whatever reason, and so they brought that to you, it would come to you anyway. And Cooper Communities, uh, is very, uh, strongly wanting this rezone. And I think this letter, um, I think fair, I think you summed it up pretty fairly. I think they've appealed the decision. I think they're telling us that if it's not adopted, that, that we're probably going to end up in court, but that's not a reason to adopt it. Uh, it's, it's just their position and you can read that in the 11 pages. Uh, and so that prompted my response regarding, uh, uh, what I said earlier. I don't want to go back all over it again in terms of our, the legality of our action. So, uh, it's a rezoning. There, everybody's getting amped up, but it's a rezoning and, and the considerations are the same.
Well, as I said, it's, uh, from what I've read of the, uh, planning commission's decision, they rejected it basically for no, uh, they did not give a reason for, for rejecting it. Uh, for declining to, um, uh, to recommend the rezoning. As I said, and it's just simply a rezoning it from P one to R one. And I personally, I don't see any reason why it should not be. At least I haven't seen that reason.
You're correct, um, Mr. Snow. If, if you do read the minutes of the, of the commission, uh, meaning there is absolutely no suggestion as to why they, they denied it. Certainly I couldn't find anything. However, as, as Mr. Kelly has stated, you know, um, this is a clean slate for us and so we can make the decision as necessary. And I think Mr. Burke has also um, mentioned that as well, that this is now up to us. I don't, I don't want to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to ask mayor, uh, just one, one question for you. You know, it really is a beautiful piece of property. Uh, I, I've spent time out there, uh, not only on, on the trail, but also on the property proper. It's, it's really a beautiful piece. They're, they're looking to make a sale of that property to somebody who would wish to build a residence. Is there, this may be farfetched, but is there a potential win-win here where, uh, the city might be able to acquire that property and, and use it? We don't have much city-owned, uh, park property. I'm not sure we have very much at all. Uh, is that, is it ability that we might be able to entertain kind of a win-win here? That would allow the city to acquire the property?
Well, we've never, you know, we've never really looked at it, um, because quite frankly, at the moment, we've been looking at, um, spending our capital dollars in, in improving the infrastructure, streets, um, and the bond projects, et cetera. If we were to start buying land, um, that would certainly impact our capital uh, going forward. Depends on the price, Steve. But because it is, it is prime property, um, I'm sure there's a prime price that goes with it. And so the balancing act for us is with 500 miles of road that we have to maintain all the time, which is more than Little Rock. And it costs us to resurface with asphalt. Um, I believe superintendent Button says it's about seventy thousand dollars a mile. So how many streets can I resurface versus buying land? If I was flush with cash and we had, um, more commercial, then yeah, probably that's something that we could entertain. But as you know, from watching all the capital going out for five years on a timeline, uh, we always have to be conscious that we keep 25% of unrestricted earnings on hand as the reserve and, and we're certainly doing that now. But long story, for, basically we have not considered purchasing land, no. Unless we're going to put a city building on it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it, it, and you know, one of the points I, kind of a sticking point for me is like, it comes back to, it is private property.
Yes, it is.
And it will stay private property, I guess, you know, rez- uh, zone or not rezone. And when it's private property, I said, that's kind of a sticky issue. Uh, I, I think a person with, you know, should probably, should be allowed to do something with that property if they so desire. Uh, I, you know, I drove out there today and I sat there and got out of my truck and looked around and I didn't really see a whole lot of opportunity, you know, for residential development, uh, you know, maybe for a, a house. I don't know, maybe two back in that, uh, northeast corner, but other than that, uh, it, it, I don't know, it's, it's, it's kind of like a flood area in a way. And, and, and I will say too, there are already homes basically, you know, in that area. So I don't know if somebody wanted to build something at north, northeast corner. I don't know how anybody that already lives there could deny somebody that opportunity if that's what they chose to do. Um, I just wonder, you know, to Steve's point, I actually thought the same thing you did, Steve. I'm sure probably maybe everybody has. Maybe the city could buy it, but I thought that'd probably be out of the realm of something we actually would do. But, uh, is there opportunity for further, uh, uh, people to modify, you know, the request from nine point some acres down to, you know, that northeast corner. I have concern with somebody actually coming in and taking this like seven point some acres and actually trying to do something to raise it up out of the floodplain. You know, and cause an issue downstream later, or even for residents who might buy a home there, you know, with, you know, that would otherwise be in the floodplain. Uh, anyway, for further compromise, you know, of that down to a, a smaller acreage, it'll make more sense. Maybe along, along the line of what, uh, Derek and the staff proposed initially. And I'm just saying, I mean, just as we're trying to work our way through this, you know, everybody has a tendency of putting a stake in the ground and that's where they're going to be. But I prefer to try to work out a solution where all parties could be, uh, satisfied.
Okay, we've spent quite a bit of time. Larry, let's make this the last comment because we have three months to talk about this.
Yeah, one, one last question, um, relative to that power line that goes through there. I'm assuming there's an easement associated with that. And if you were to take the easement line, northeast moon line and the power line and then follow the lot six area, how much of the lot, how many acres is that approximately? And you don't need to answer it now, but if you could figure that out, that would be helpful.
Okay, uh, Derek, can we leave that with you?
Yes, and I may just, with council member Wilms to make sure I fully understand that we can do that calculation.
Okay, fair enough. All righty, now as I said, this is an ordinance, so next Monday, it's going to get its first reading out of three. So we still have a lot of time to talk about it, tweak it, uh, look at it. So, um, as Mr. Fowler mentioned, I don't think we have to put a stake in the ground anywhere, but we can certainly continue to discuss it. We had a good conversation this evening, so let's keep that conversation going when we get together on Monday. So if I may, I'll just move us along.
It would be my, it would be my assumption that the applicant would like to have us turn it around in sooner than three months, though.
I'm sure, but that is something else that the, you know, if the council so desires and, and they wish to go to third and final at some time, then we can certainly do that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Let's move on to item number C. It is a resolution designating authorized dispersing officers and municipal depository board for the city of Bella Vista for the calendar year of 2021. So this is housekeeping that we do every year. Um, by law, we have to say who can sign the checks. And then we also set up a municipal depository board, which meets from time to time, uh, to look at our investments, our CDs, and with the help of, um, uh, I'm trying to remember the name. It's the offshoot from First Security.
Cruz.
Cruz, thank you. Um, you know, we sit down and we determine how we want to invest, uh, going down into the future. So we have left the, the signing of the checks the same as it was last year. It's the mayor pro tem. Um, whoever that might be, it's the city clerk, the police chief. Um, that should actually say council member Jim Wozniak. Um, and myself and Carrie Elson, who's the finance director. And we try to move people who want to be on the municipal, uh, depository board and, uh, And um, I dubbed Wayne this time around. He's been with us for six years and he's never had the opportunity to be on it. So I thought it might be interesting for him. Um, are there any questions at all or discussion? Yes, Larry.
Uh, on section two, the depository board, I, I would, is it limited to three people? Or, or is that the established somewhere else that the depository board is?
Established by, it's established by state law and it's, it's um, it's three persons, I think, uh, let me, it'll take me a while, Larry, to find it. Uh, if you want to try and add more people, I, I, I don't think you can. I do, I do think it's limited to three, but I can certainly verify that for you.
Yeah, I think we, I think we had that question about four years ago. But Larry, how about we leave it to Mr. Kelly? We'll do the research and get back to council. Is that satisfactory?
It is. My question would be really, should it be one of the council people as being a third person on there? I think the mayor belongs on there and I think uh, finance director does. But I'm wondering if it would be appropriate that we have a council member uh, as being that third party is really recent for my question.
I believe we asked that question to you, Mr. Kelly, to ensure that it was okay for the city clerk to be on it.
And it's, it's, it's allowed, uh, but it's up to you.
Uh, I'm, I'm thinking that it might be more representative of the electorate in, in Bella Vista. Uh, our city clerk doesn't have voting authority on the council. So in that sense, he doesn't have a decision-making authority relative to issues here. So that was the reason for my suggestion that it be a council person as the third party.
Hey, anybody else want to weigh in on this? This is fairly recent, you know, this is fairly easy housekeeping, folks.
Yeah, I know.
Hey, anybody got any comments?
I think it's fine having Wayne do it. I think it's a fine idea.
Okay, let's move on.
Don't fix it.
All righty, let's move on to item D. It's also a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group for the purchase of three. This should say 2020. We originally thought it was going to be 2021. I'll come back to that. Dodge Charger Police Cruisers pursuant to state procurement contract in amount not to exceed 78,000 for the police department. Um, Chief is sitting here with me, but in a nutshell, he discovered that Dodge is not going to be making a Charger this year that's a V eight. So he has found three 2020 V eights and has decided that that would be a better purchase. And that comes up to the sum total of 74,853 dollars. We do have um, more than that that is actually sitting in the approved budget because there are all sorts of add-ons, lights, radios. We now have scanners for the driver's license and printers to be able to print off the uh, the citations. Um, and of course, we have the computers that are inside all the, all the, uh, all the vehicles as well. And I think you're putting brush guards on the front of all the vehicles now as well. So, but the 2020 uh, Wayne will change, excuse me, the 2021, he will change to 2020. Um, because of that, that change that um, I guess it's superior that you're dealing with, isn't it? Yeah, a superior said that there wouldn't be a 2021 V eight.
Can I ask a question?
Sir.
Um, I noticed that the department has had some Ford Explorers uh, in the past. Uh, the reason why they're going to Dodge rather than the Ford?
So, yeah, so that's a great question. When I first got here, my intent was to get every, everything into a, a four-wheel drive type vehicle. I didn't want to go to the Explorer. Uh, the first year we went to the Explorer, I think was in 2018. Uh, then his 2019 Ford promptly said, hey, we're not going to make the Explorer anymore. We're going to make more like a Tahoe. Uh, they changed the body style, they raised the price of it. And so it just wasn't economical for me then to, what happens every time a, a company changes the body style? Then it changes our cages, all the equipment we put in it. We can't transfer equipment from, from frame to frame. Uh, and so it just becomes cost prohibitive. So at that time, I discovered Dodge uh, did make um, the Charger an all-wheel drive. And so we decided to go back to the Dodge Charger because the body style remains the same, which allows us to, to drive a vehicle to its mileage capacity and then move the equipment into a new frame. It saves us some money when that happens. So, so that, that's, that's sort of why the every, when we have all these different vehicles we drive, it just costs us more money with these specific equipment. We have to buy it out of them. Uh, and so we're going back to the all-wheel drive Charger. We'll throw a Tahoe in there once in a while just to give us some um, uh, clearance when we have snow and things like that.
It's easier on the hips of a dog.
Oh, yeah, and there, and, and for our K nine vehicles, we discovered it's easier for the hips of the, the canines to get in and out of a Dodge Charger as opposed to, to a Tahoe. So we're moving our K nine vehicles back to the Dodge Charger.
The fee did say that they are, um, the Charger will not be made anymore, though it's.
No, no, the way it is, but the problem is in, in 2020, 2021, they decided just to make the Pursuit all-wheel drive Dodge Charger in a V six. Uh, we did that a few years back. We bought a couple of V sixes thinking we saved some money and we'd save some fuel or something like that. And we had a lot of problems with the V six engine blocks and they, they just wouldn't hold up. Uh, and so we, we want to stick with the V eights. I was lucky enough to find the last three 2020 V eights in the area. A superior was able to find them for us. And so it's, it's, it's no different. There's still brand new Dodge Chargers, uh, never been driven, uh, but they're 2020s.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So Peter, is the 78,000 a total for all three?
Yes. It's actually a little less, John, but at the time that we put this together, um, we, we had thought that we were putting 2021s together, but it's very close and it says not to exceed. So we've just left it in. Okay, let me move on to number E. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a third amendment to the limited terminable license agreement trail system license with the Bella Vista Village Property Owners Association, Inc. For the purpose of adding parcels for expansion of the public trail system. So here's the scoop. If you look in your packet, there are some maps. Um, probably the best are the last two. We have one ride called Flow Ride, which is in the blue. It is a one-way and it's downhill most of the way. And actually ends up very close to the piece of property that we were just talking to down in Castleboro. Um, we have trail counters and Flow Ride is the least used trail. And so the maintenance is higher because, of course, the grass will grow, et cetera, et cetera. When you don't have a lot of vehicle, or a lot of bicycles and a lot of hiking going on it. Um, so the Trailblazer organization decided to find out why. And the main reason was people wanted to be able to go up the hill as well. And the way that this hill is built, it's not conducive to going uphill. However, there is an old existing epic trail. Epic trails were built around the turn of the century. Um, in those days, in the bush for personal recreation without having any agreements from uh, the POA um, and any other property owner. They just built trails where they thought it was a place to have a, a cool trail. Well, there happens to be a former one that is parallel to the Flow Ride and it is also inside all the property that we are using currently for the existing Flow Ride trail. So the plan then is to uh, improve that one trail. And then at the top, there was never the, there was no way that someone could get the Flow Ride over to the next red trail on the east side without having to come down on, on Trafalgar, which is dangerous. So what they're proposing is to build, and you can see it on the last map, uh, another section of trail that goes into the far trail on the right-hand side, uh, the red trail as it's depicted here. And that means that we can get the cyclists and the hikers off the road and we can get them onto trails and keep them safe. So this is what um, is being proposed. And as a result, of course, we will have to change the agreement. I believe if I remember correctly, this is going to be the third one. Um, because we have had to tweak the trails. Yeah, this is the third amendment. We've had to tweak them in the past because we, if you remember Buckingham, just off the trailhead, uh, it was very steep. And we had a lot of complaints. And so we had the, the crews come back in. Now it's, it's much more switchbacks and it's easier particularly for people hiking to get up and down that trail. So we've had to modify before and this is another modifying, um, another modification that Trailblazers is um, is suggesting that we do. Are there any questions at all? Okay, that's the end of the resolutions. Now we get into the discussion items. Okay, we've been at this for a couple of hours now. So um, let me kick it off with ambulance billing. When we were talking about the, the 2021 budget, you may remember, one of you asked the question, why is the ambulance billing down? And I personally thought it was because of the changing demographics, but Chief biked up and said, no, actually we're running more. So that piqued my interest. Um, I got Carrie involved and we started to look at it. And we discovered that the ambulance billing is in arrears. And one of the reasons for it is we have one person and only one person who does the billing. And that person has been ill and has actually had surgery. So we're playing catch-up. Um, also, we are billing more as the city continues to grow. I think you've told me that the ambulance runs are increasing. And um, so I thought, well, I wonder what other cities have done. So I reached out to three other cities that have an ambulance service, Springdale, Bentonville, and Siloam Springs. And they have all outsourced it a long time ago. They just didn't want to put up with the hassle anymore. And so that's what I'm, I'm looking at now. We actually have an RFP on the street that responses are due back on the 31st of January. And um, we're going to look very, very seriously at outsourcing. Is the fee for outsourcing going to cost any more than what it's costing us now? The preliminary look at it says probably not. And um, so I think it's, it's worthy just to get away from it. We actually have two systems here. We have the billing system, which is Tri-Tech. Uh, they have been terrific in working with us over the last, oh, three or four weeks. Um, that has, that function is now moved under Carrie. Both the billing and the reporting of the calls, which is in another system. Image trend, image trend was all under Chief Sims. And it just didn't make a lot of sense to have everything under him when the finance could be under Carrie. So Carrie is, is running the uh, point on the RFP. And Chief is continuing to keep image trend. Image trend is used when the paramedics are out in the field and they have to type up the report on what they did. And based on what they say, translates into specific coding and coding is an art, as I have found out, that actually goes into the billing system. So we will keep the image trend side, but if uh, you know, going forward, we decide to go and outsource it, then we will work with that professional billing uh, company. And I'm quite sure they're very familiar with image trend and certainly with the coding. So I just wanted to bring you up to snuff on what we're looking at as we move forward. Probably made a good idea to, you know, have the ambulance billing within the, uh, the fire department. When we first moved fire, fire, uh, uh, the ambulance department had been a private company. And when the city took over the fire department, they offered us all the ambulances and, and, and we took over the billing as part of the deal. So Larry, I think you had a question.
How might that affect personnel?
We have, we have one person who's doing the billing now. Um, probably won't be able to find another job for her because she's in such a very narrow field. She's married to one of our firefighters today. The other is um, part-time and she moved out of the fire department last summer. She was in on a special task.
She was on special task.
And she's now working part-time with Carrie. Um, but she's very, very strong on the accounting side. Anyone else?
Yeah, a question. You, you said that the billing was in arrears, how much?
Uh, when we look back, it was back to August. It's now up to the end of October.
I think so.
We, so we've made some catch-up, Jerry, with more to go. But I will, I will be honest with you, there is uh, some monies that we will never be able to bill because Medicare and um, and Medicaid actually do not allow you to keep, build accounts that haven't, or accounts that need to be billed any longer than so many months. After that, they will completely refuse to pay. And unfortunately, we've lost some of that.
How many, how many dollars? How many dollars?
Yeah, we lost about 150,000 in billing. That doesn't mean that's what Medicaid would pay because Medicaid and Medicare are notorious for not paying what you bill. But uh, the loss in billed revenue, not necessarily earned, is about 150,000. That's what we determined in working with Tri-Tech.
So, so going with the um, outside billing then would be more than paper itself then?
Well, yes, it's certainly looking that way now. You're absolutely right. And that's been the experience of the other three cities. Okay, Doug, I'm going to ask you to give us an update on trails, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, uh, the two trail projects, Little Sugar Trails are all but done with a few punchless items remaining. We're still waiting uh, final notification from CEI engineers uh, in order to pay the last retainers to the contractor. The Blount Springs to Metfield paved connector moving along nicely. We're still having meetings every two weeks with the contractor. Um, they're moving on up close, pretty close to Metfield now. Um, with very little concrete work uh, left to be done. An estimated completion date in mid to late in March. Um, but if the weather stays good, it could be, could be sooner than that.
I saw them out there when it was pretty cold last week and they were braving it and working.
Yeah, they're trucking along, they're making good progress.
I got a, I got a question.
Uh, just a sec, Jerry. Uh, Larry had his hand up for, excuse me, uh, Larry.
One, one question is that the trail system that's on the property along Huntley east of the POA Maintenance and Water Division. Um, I've seen up to nearly 30 cars there on a nice Saturday or Sunday. Uh, what is the proposal for providing suitable parking on that uh, track, uh, under, on that track that they've developed?
Yeah, that's a part of our trail system, Larry. That's private property. It's owned um, and it has been developed by uh, the Walton boys. But it is open to the public, you're quite correct. I don't know what the plans are for parking in the future. They do have that rather large, flat space at the top, which can hold quite a few vehicles. Uh, but it is, it is not connected with our trails and we're not uh, and we're not responsible for the maintenance.
What is the zoning on the land and how does that allow such an enterprise to be established there?
Don't know. Doug, do you know the zoning?
I believe it's recreationally zoned, um, Larry. And I think they have proposed a parking area there. Only to look, uh, do a little research to see where that is in the process of paperwork. And while, you know, I don't know how many spots they've allocated. Um, there, there'll have to be some uniformity to it, like the ones you see down at Chelsea. They won't be able to just to park anywhere willy-nilly.
And, and, and I'd like to, I guess, know what the schedule is because right now it's uh, unimproved parking area. So there's some tracking that occurs on poor weather days or muddy, after muddy rains. So there's some tracking that occurs on poor weather days or muddy after muddy rains. Um, and it's unsafe in terms of how the vehicles are jammed in there at times. So I think we need, I think we need to look at uh, somehow getting a plan together and a time schedule to implement.
You bet. I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jerry?
Long Houston, uh, uh, from about um, Dartmoor, um, east on Houston. There's a rather dangerous situation there where the um, the trail is almost up to the, to the street. And if a vehicle drops off of the uh, uh, off of the pavement, um, they're either gonna, good probability, they're gonna flip over. Is there any provision for guardrails along there or what's going to happen?
I made that comment over a year ago, Jerry, and I'm still waiting for something. I didn't ask for a guardrail. I just asked maybe they needed to move it.
Yeah, originally, originally the trail design was too close to the road and they did, they did move it over to
No, they didn't. They did not touch the bike trail. It's on the east side of uh, Houston. Did not touch it.
I'm, I'm talking about this one they're making right now, Mr. Watson.
That's on the other side. I don't have a problem with that one. But the one I mentioned a year ago was on the other side. So it's a year ago and nothing has happened.
Jerry, are you talking about the hard surface trail or the soft surface trail?
The hard surface.
Okay, different trails.
That's different from what Jim's talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking on the other side.
Hey Doug, on the, on the hard surface trail?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what was the plan?
That was designed too close and we did have discussions with uh, the designer and they moved it over. Uh, there are um, some parameters that'll have to be met as far as drop off and distance from road edge. I can get with EDG on that and see uh, if you, what's the exact location, Jerry? You have, I can run that by the engineers and see if, see if there's something to that, that hasn't been installed yet that's coming. I know they're finishing up some things in that area. It's not complete.
Well, I know what Jerry's talking about. When you're on Dartmoor and you turn left on to Houston, it's a relatively short distance there, but this, the new sidewalk is very, very close to the road for a short distance. And then it kind of moves inward, but it's really close for a while there. That's where he's talking about, right after you turn on the
Yeah, I know there was, there's some areas down through there where utilities, drainage uh, came into play and, and we asked them to move it as far as they could. And I know the Trailblazers. Uh, there were some, a lot of discussions about that and I think they were pitched in there for uh, locations and you know, distances from the road edge. They moved it over as much as they can, but I'll definitely run that back by them and see if there's something else that can be done.
Okay, so it sounds, I'm sorry, Jerry, it sounds um, as if it's down by the second or third hole of uh, of the par nine, excuse me, of the nine.
It's farther, it's farther south than that.
Is that okay?
It's much closer to where Dartmoor comes off the hill.
Yeah, I think, I think I know what you're talking about. I, I drove by there last week and saw that. Okay.
All right, um, John, can we ask you to give us an update, please, on impact fees?
Yeah, uh, I talked to Carson Weiss uh, late last week. He has uh, uh, gotten info from all the department heads. And he actually has the library fee set that's done. These, he feels like he's got all the financial info he needs on the police and fire. He was still looking for some more info this week from the road department. And he did say that, that they'd asked that the road, the streets guy, Mike Button, that had a heavy lift. Apparently they'd asked him some questions that were a little challenging. Uh, so he feels like he's on schedule to be done like the original schedule said in uh, late February. Um, I have put together the Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, the mayor tasked me with doing that. And uh, if you'd like, I could tell you the seven names real quickly. Uh, it's uh, Linda Lloyd. I think you all know her. She volunteered early on when she realized she wasn't going to be on council. And I did think she had a good background for this sort of thing. Uh, Jimmy Foster, he's on the Streets Committee and he was uh, high up in operations in Plano, Texas, right before he retired. And is interested in being more involved in city. He's got a really good background. You know, Plano has about uh, two hundred thousand people. So it's, he's got a real good background for that. And uh, they wanted us to get some folks from the building side. So I called Community Development, got some names and uh, we got Ray Kurtiens, who's with RK Construction. And Oliver Kiesel, who's with Oak Homes. And uh, JB Portillo, I think a lot of you probably know her. She's at Great Enderson City Matters. Uh, Charlie Teal, who's president of Bella Vista Foundation and used to be over the POA Board. He's real uh, interested in local things here. And Dale Phillips, who's co-president of the History Museum. He used to be uh, involved with the federal government and uh, uh, as a younger retiree, has a lot of energy and is interested in being more active in things around the community. So we tried to get a bit of a cross-section, made sure we had some builders on there. They advised me to have seven people was a good number and that's what we have. And he's going to meet with them, the Advisory Committee, into January, our first week in February.
I, I don't want to interrupt, but I've got somebody at home who's been four weeks in the hospital. And now the puppy dog needs to go outside and she can barely walk. So I'll be gone for a little bit. If you finish before I'm done, well, too bad. So sad, but I don't want to have to clean the house up.
Okay. So uh, that's where we stand with the uh, impact fee. Everything's on schedule. And I think uh, we'll be hearing something in, in February as far as uh, what he's coming up with.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for John? Larry?
Will they be looking at anything about sewer and water capabilities? For impact fees?
Uh, well, I think they're focusing, I, I think there's going to be a lot of focus on uh, uh, things that are anticipated to be done the next few years. Cause you have to spend the money, you know, in seven years or so. So uh, yeah, I think they're looking at the whole, pretty much everything, but uh, I think police and fire are going to be a main thrust of it and, and probably roads.
And, and drainage as well, those, the three utility areas?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
You know, recognizing that you can only use the money on something new. You can't use it to replace anything. If you remember, we had that discussion with Mr. Weiss when he was on the, on the air with us.
Yep.
Okay, anything else for John?
My only comment, I, I want to reinforce every time we talk about it. I think we can make this as complex as we need to. We need to keep it simple. We need to move briskly. Uh, this is something I think that is fair to the residents of Bella Vista. And we should not get bogged down in too much complexity. Let's keep it simple and move forward.
It's the old KISS principle, my friend.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, Farmers Market. Let me just give a bit of a history lesson because Jerry, um, the Farmers Market was not in play last time you were on council. We started it up about four years ago. Uh, we first held it over at the um, uh, the Mercy Clinic. We think we had it there for two years. The operation was run by a young lady that we hired and the oversight was done by the city. And um, it was not an ideal situation. Primarily because we had to buy insurance and the moment we buy insurance, then we lose toward immunity. And it was difficult for us to find the bandwidth as well to oversee it. The A and P Commission then uh, picked it up after we moved it from Mercy down to the parking lot where it is today where Allen's is located. Reason we did that was because we couldn't get more vendors for the Mercy Clinic location. It was too far from seventy-one. And the vendor said, if you move it closer to seventy-one, then we will have an opportunity to join and join. They did. We just about doubled the number of vendors. Um, so the A and P Commission looked after it in, in twenty nineteen. Uh, for twenty twenty, we canceled it because of COVID. Um, going forward, not sure what's going to happen. The A and P has decided not to manage it uh, going forward. Um, I would like to keep the city out of managing it as well. We did reach out to the lady who had uh, run it two years ago. And she didn't respond. Um, Cassie put a posting out on social media asking if anybody would be interested in working with the city to put one together. And we actually um, had a lady approach us yesterday. Her name is Dawn Cross. She's the newly elected president of the Bella Vista Business Association. And what I have suggested to her is that she get in touch with Downtown Bentonville Link or DBI. Um, which is a business association that runs their market. And they're funded, I believe, by vendor fees and I think they may also, Doug, get something from the A and P. Um, but I've asked her to have a look at that and see just how is it set up? Cause it seems to work well. Are we going to be able to have it this year? Probably not, is my feeling. If we were going to actually successfully do it, we should have started planning in October and we couldn't get anybody to step forward. And I still don't know what the governor is going to do with his emergency declaration. That seems to be up in the air at the moment. Um, certainly over the last couple of days anyway, the new positive cases have been fewer than we've seen in quite some time. I haven't seen any numbers today, so I don't know if they're in that same nine hundred to a thousand or whether they've gone back up again. So we'll just have to play it by ear and see what happens. And that's pretty much where we are. Steve, you had asked this to be on. Do you have any comment?
Uh, only to say, I've heard from a number of people that are hopeful that the Farmers Market, the Bella Vista Farmers Market is not dead and gone. Perhaps it, it has suffered and I think perhaps it suffers from a lack of critical mass. Do we have enough vendors? Do we have enough uh, visitors uh, coming there? But I hope we can give it one more shot. I hope we can find a way, the right model, uh, somebody to, to manage that, coordinate it for us so that we can take one more shot, perhaps next year at uh, Farmers Market.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, let's move on to the next topic, which is the use of CARES Act funds. Steve, it's yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, we did speak about this in the last work session. Uh, just by way of quick recap, uh, city of Bella Vista has been the benefactor of over a million dollars in CARES Act funding. Uh, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand of that uh, came from uh, our actual expenses related to uh, COVID response. Seven hundred and thirty-two thousand of it was reimbursement for uh, police salaries uh, for the better part of two thousand and twenty. And so I see that seven hundred and thirty-two thousand uh, much as a windfall for uh, the city of Bella Vista. And I think some portion of that money that we didn't plan on, we didn't expect, but that we got. Some portion of that money should be invested in the city of Bella Vista uh, directly. Uh, I came up with some, some ideas last time and I shared those. I, I've heard some feedback uh, from other city councilors. I think there is some general support for this. It may have been a little rich on the uh, on the first go-around. So I've tried to uh, suggest scaling it back. I'm trying to do a share screen here and see if I can get that to work. Share.
All of you should have received it today from Wayne. I think you sent it to Wayne.
Oh, that's right. That's right. It did go out. Thank you for that. So the current version, I'm not, I'm not able to do this. Uh, my computer seems to be rebelling. But my uh, the current version of it is uh, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of spend. And it's really spread over two years. And it's really protecting or, or, or investing in three key areas. One is our first responders, uh, that the uh, fire department uh, was able to benefit from uh, some hazard pay over the course of twenty twenty, but the police department and the dispatchers were not. And so I would see us taking a portion of that money uh, as a hazard bonus for members of the police department dispatchers. Uh, the, the entire team, that's about fifty-two people, that amounts to fifty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the Bella Vista Business Association. If you remember on the first go-around, I spoke a little bit about perhaps a grant program for, for small businesses that have suffered. And, and that became a little burdensome. We'd have to have, there's a lot of overhead with that. How do you process the applications? This would be a proxy for that, a very uh, simple proxy would be a, a funding of the Bella Vista Business Association for the next two years in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars per year. I've spoken with the president, uh, Dawn Cross, who uh, Mayor Christie just mentioned. Yes, uh, the, the businesses of Bella Vista have suffered through the pandemic with very few exceptions. Uh, some of them have, have suffered greatly. Uh, these are generally small businesses. Some of them are brick and mortar. Some of them are uh, you know, run from their home, run on the internet. And this would be a gesture to show how important the relationship is between the city and our businesses. And the city has really fared well. You know, if you think about it in terms of our sales taxes are still up. We've had this million dollars of funding uh, come our way. Uh, a large portion of it, we didn't anticipate. Uh, so investing in our small businesses is something I think is really important. We would turn that funding over to the Business Association of, uh, to, to use to really lift up some of those businesses uh, by way of events. They might want to hold promotions that they might want to do. Publicizing their uh, their membership. Uh, the next one is Northwest Arkansas Food Banks, who serve the residents of Bella Vista. Who uh, we, we do have elderly. We do have people uh, living uh, with hunger as an issue. And this would be a way to invest in those food banks. Uh, that totals to five thousand dollars a year for two years or ten thousand dollars. Uh, the animal shelter and, and they, you know, I've watched them do a fantastic job this year of continuing their, their uh, fundraising. Uh, but they definitely live month to month. They, they are always in need of more. They, they have capital projects that they need to do that they have not been able to do. This would amount to twenty thousand dollars in, in supplement to what we already have in an agreement with the animal shelter. That would be ten thousand dollars this year, ten thousand dollars next year for a total of twenty thousand. And then finally, the Bella Vista Recycling Center. This is one of the institutions of Bella Vista that makes us a great place. It's, it's a 501(c). Uh, likewise, a donation of ten thousand dollars this year and ten thousand dollars next year for a total of twenty thousand dollars for the Bella Vista Recycle Center. So the total spend on this is a hundred and fifty-two thousand. Again, I think seven hundred and thirty-two thousand of that is basically a windfall to us. And I think this portion of it, around twenty percent uh, is, is a responsible investment in the city. Uh, a responsible investment in our businesses, a responsible investment in our uh, key charities. So I, I contemplate bringing this back around as a resolution for your consideration. And I just wanted to float it out here again and show you. I've, I've heard the feedback. I've, I've tried to really scale back on this. And uh, wanted to see uh, if, if this is something we might be able to rally around.
I should tell you that I have also suggested to, I see you, Jim, just a sec. I've also suggested to Steve that if you're going to do the hazard pay, we have um, roughly twenty-four people in the Streets Department who have never stopped. They have worked right through COVID and they're out in the community working. Um, we also have billing inspectors. And we also had code enforcement people that are out on the street too, interacting with the residents. Um, so while they may not meet the so-called first responder designation, they have certainly been out in the thick of it. Um, okay, let's open it up. Jim?
Where were you when my wife's beauty shop closed? Which is neither here nor there. Uh, can we legally do this? Is my first question. Can we legally, legally, you know, give this money away?
Uh, Jim, there are, there are parts of it that probably would require some contracts. In other words, we can't just give a lump of money to the recycling center, but we can have a contract with them for
Like we do now.
Extended services or some things. There's some structural things. Now, in terms of the Business Association, uh, because of some changes to our state constitution in the last five years or so, I think it probably is going to be able for us just to appropriate money for them directly. If it's for economic development. So I think there are probably some ways to accomplish all these things, not all the same for each one. But if there's a desire to do it, there's certainly a way to get some of this done.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I would, I think the program that Steve has outlined here is a reasonable one. It benefits directly our community and the first responders, as he's outlined. I don't know how far we want to stretch this out. We could add everybody and their brother, including you, the mayor, the clerk, city hall staff, the elected officials. We could put everybody in there. We've all worked through the entire program. So I don't know how far you need to stretch it. I think it's a reasonable limitation that he's outlined in terms of covering folks who were not covered by funding directly to those departments. So I don't know that I want to extend it to everybody.
Okay, I'm not suggesting anybody. You know, everybody. Certainly, I don't want the money because I'm not in the front lines, because the guys dumping, you know, driving the dump trucks and repairing the streets and the inspectors that go out on the job sites as well as code enforcement.
And most of those are not exposed to the same types of things that
Really? You should try We had an inspector die and once been two weeks and I see you. I think, I think we're just
I heard that today for the first time. I regret that. It was unfortunate.
Anybody else want to weigh in? John?
Yeah, the elected officials, they don't need it. We didn't get in the middle of it unless you absolutely positively wanted to.
That's fair.
I can see, including the the street guys and the building guys.
John?
Well, that is one of the tricky parts when you start picking out employees, you know, then somebody says, well, what about me? What about this? What about that? So it's a little bit of a dangerous area. I have kind of mixed feelings about the charity thing. These are good charities, but you know, it's very difficult to get to the people that were actually hurt by this. For example, the animal shelter, which I think is a great outfit, a great charity. The number of dogs and cats they had last year was way down. I think a lot of it had to do with the pandemic. Apparently, people are adopting, started adopting pets like crazy because they were home all the time. I heard in some of the big cities, they were even running out of animals at times. But so I just think it's hard to pick and choose. You know, I think the city's job is police and fire and streets and library and things like that. And giving money to charities, I'm just not sure that's what we should be doing.
Okay, anybody else? Jerry, any thoughts?
Go ahead, Jerry.
From the business standpoint, I mean, I think that we need to do a better job of identifying the businesses that we have in Bella Vista. I know one particular organization right now says that we have something over three hundred businesses in Bella Vista. I mean, we have got a tremendous amount of home-based businesses and I we need to do a better job of identifying those and somehow being able to keep track of those businesses.
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about that about four or five years ago, Jerry, and came to the conclusion, the only way you could do it would be to levy a business license of some description. And council at that time really didn't want to be burdening businesses with an extra twenty-five bucks or whatever that we talked about per year. Because there's really no other way to find them. We looked in the tax records and unfortunately, the records that we get from state telling us who's paying the sales tax don't go down to the company level. They stay high at SIP codes. So it just says hospitality or gas stations, that kind of thing. It doesn't do a deep dive for us, which is unfortunate.
It would, it would be one way of validating businesses that operate out of their home is to issue a business license. There are many communities that do that for home-based businesses.
Certainly something that could be considered.
I don't think it would necessarily be a, from the revenue standpoint, it would just, if it was something, just something minimal, ten bucks, something just to provide a means of registration to identifying those businesses. Would that be from the, be from the benefit of the fire department as well as the police department? To know if they go on a call to a particular location, what might be, what they might be expecting there. If it be some form of a chemical, whatever it might be, it would be to, to to every department to be able to identify the businesses that we have in the city.
Maybe some of them don't want to be found.
I'm sure.
Larry?
Typically, the home-based businesses that I've experienced is that if they're home-based, they may pay twenty dollars. If they're a storefront or they're a kind of order, it might be fifty dollars for the license from the city. So you can differentiate that way. It's a matter just of getting them on the record for one. They may not have a sales tax at all because of how they operate their home business, so. But it would legitimize that many of them.
That's a little different, I think, than the scope of the proposal that I'm submitting here, so. We do have, we do have a Bella Vista Business Association. It does have a robust membership. They're out there as an alternative, if you will, to a chamber of commerce. They're trying to help each other survive. They're trying to, they're trying to get recognition for their businesses. And this is a way for the city to support that. We haven't had a strong relationship between the city and the Bella Vista Business Association. I go back with them a couple of generations of their leadership. This is, this is a way for us to show our care, our concern for them. The other thing is, we used to say in the corporate world that if you're afraid to recognize anybody because you might not recognize everybody, then you won't recognize anybody and you won't reward anybody. And so fear of maybe getting too few or too many is no reason not to reward our frontline or first responders with this. And then the other thing is, as a city, yes, we are police, fire, roads and library, but we're also animal shelter. You think we're out there without the benefit of all. One of our responsibilities. We don't fund them as benevolence. We do that so that we don't have animals running all over the city. In many cities, that is a function of the city. So too is recycling. So these are, these are functions that we have a responsibility, I think, to make sure for the quality of life in Bella Vista, that our animal shelter is strong, that our recycling center is strong and that they have the means to continue operations even through the pandemic.
Okay, before we leave this, Mr. Fowler, you've been uncharacteristically quiet. Any thoughts?
No, I mean, I support the idea in theory. I think it's, you know, something that, you know, we certainly could do, maybe should do. I just think the devil's in the details. I just think, you know, rather than just kind of, you know, posting numbers and I think they're, you know, somewhat arbitrary. And I don't really disagree with John. I think supporting the charities, I'm not really sure about that. And, you know, I, I mean, the animal shelter is wonderful. It's awesome. You know, I spent, you know, I spent time down there working through the ordinance that we crafted and talking to the people, love them to death. They're great, great people. But we have shuffled quite a bit of money their way here recently. I just think that, again, the idea is a good one. I just really think we really need to sit down and work through some additional details. And, you know, like the listing of employees, to your point. You know, I could see how we could broaden that. If we're going to distribute some money, I do think we need to put a few controls around it and make sure that the money is used wisely, you know, in the community. That's all. I don't know. I I get it. I get it. I just think that we need, we need to not be arbitrary and be pretty specific with what we do.
Okay, fair enough. Steve, there's some feedback for you.
Thank you.
Just remember, if you're going to meet with anybody, you have to, you know, announce the meeting through Wayne if you want to pull some of your peers together.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the last one. And that's the posting of city council video recordings to the city website. Steve, this is yours and it's good that John is here because I believe John, Cassie, yourself and Eric spoke about this. And there's some bandwidth problems of trying to get it over into YouTube, etc. We might be able to do it as one-offs.
Yes.
Steve, do you want to kick it off?
Only just briefly to say that I found recently in trying to kind of keep track of the governor steering committee on the COVID relief funding, that I found a site for the steering committee that had their agenda and their minutes as ours did, but it also had a recording of their meetings. And so I was able to observe. I was able to look in the minutes, look at the agenda and even observe part of the meetings. And I found it very useful. And I thought if we could do the same for the residents of our city, that that would be a step in the right direction of a transparent government that's fully accessible to the residents of Bella Vista.
And John, were there some technical challenges?
It's mainly just an additional bandwidth required to do that because right now we do make the recordings available on demand. And I also submit it to the TV station.
Okay.
So if there's a, you don't have to ban to publish it on YouTube or
But we have to have more bandwidth to be able to push it out?
More from a personnel standpoint, yeah.
Okay, but video also takes up a lot of
A lot of space.
A lot of space.
They're huge files, these meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it would take, you know. It's usually, I think, I don't know, around forty-five minutes, you know, per hour or something. So like tonight's meeting would take a couple hours. Tomorrow just upload, you know.
Or just two hours to upload. Okay. All right, so we may have a bit of a challenge, not, well, some bandwidth from the technical side, but also from, from a human resources perspective, we may be a little challenged as well. But they are available on a one-off. Is that correct? And they can get them from the TV station?
They can directly from us and the TV station does arrows, as we understand it.
Okay, all right. If anybody has any thoughts, relay them through me and I'll make sure that it gets out to, you know, to Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. It's been a long meeting. My stomach's beginning to growl. Yes, Larry?
I would like to inquire for discussion at the next meeting as how we get streetlights installed at intersections for traffic purposes. And you don't have to answer me now. We can take it up at the next month's schedule. You put that on the list.
Are you talking traffic lights or are you talking streetlights?
Streetlights, streetlights only.
That's really easy. You just call the streets department, speak to Brent Coffey and he's got the parameters. There's usually two parameters. If there's a child or children that's waiting for a school bus, then we will put a light in. Because in the darker times of the season such as now, previous councils have always thought we don't want children out in the middle of the night or in the darkness waiting for a bus. Similarly, when they come home at night, it's often dark as well. And they wanted the children to be in a lit area. The other consideration is the gentleman to my left and your right is Chief Sims, or sorry, Chief Braves, unless you're not a party, who is often asked from a safety perspective related to possible criminal activity or safety for vehicles at some intersections. Some residents have proposed to put a light in. And so he will send someone out or oftentimes I think you actually go out yourself. And there are times when, yes, indeed, we need to put a light there. And then there are some times when, no, we really don't need it. The third alternative is that a resident can put a light up themselves if they're willing to pay for it. And we have quite a few around Bella Vista. John is the one outside your house. Is that a private light or is that a city?
Yeah, no, that's, I pay for that. I forget what it is. I think it's maybe five bucks a month on your electric bill.
Yeah, okay.
And the way to determine, the way to determine whether you're paying for it or the city's paying for it, if the light is turned towards the house or in that general direction, then the resident is paying for it. If it's over the street, then we're paying for it as a city. So you can look at any light, determine who's paying for it.
Paying for it. Yeah.
Now, where it gets a bit hairy is children grow up and they move away and they go to college. And trying to go back and backtrack to figure out if the child is still there or are there replacement children? We've never tackled that nut. But we do have a tracking of where the lights have gone in over the last six years. And it's very difficult, by the way, trying to reconcile those lights at times with our friends at Carol because their records are old in some cases. And we even tried to reconcile with the POA and we were successful because it turned out that we were paying for some of their lights. But it was pretty gruesome. It took the better part of a year to figure that one out. Larry, you had your hand up again?
One last thing I wanted to say thank you to Steve Sims and his staff for establishing the COVID vaccination sites at Reardon for the residents of Bella Vista. And we really appreciate that.
I would also extend that to Cassie, both Cassie and the chief. I tasked them to look at it when I was contacted last Thursday, I guess, by the CEO of Northwest who was frustrated because he had doses on hand and he didn't know how to get them into the arms because he didn't have the reach into the community. And so I ended up calling Cassie and Steve and they put this whole plan together, which we'll find out tomorrow. It certainly filled up quickly this afternoon. But we may be able to extend it a little bit further. Who knows? But we're anxiously waiting tomorrow. I'm going to be down there and have a look at it. And then we'll have a postmortem at the end of the day to see what worked and what didn't work.
Chief Sims, how many slots did you fill?
Two hundred and eighty-eight, yeah, two hundred and eighty-eight. So we have, we've got a few more.
A hundred, five hundred doses. We've got a total of six hundred.
Well, six hundred.
We have three hundred doses on hand right now.
So if we can do it and increase the, you know, maybe every X number of minutes instead of the Y that we're using now. The other thing that I'm starting to work on in the background with my political friends in Little Rock and with the hospital is this is great, so we're going to give everybody, you know, their first shot, but unfortunately it takes two. So how do we get the boosters up here? But I'm quite confident that we'll be able to overcome that as well. I will tell you that the way that we're able to do this and not other cities and even, even some of the schools got turned down is because we have a community paramedic program that is recognized and licensed by state, especially the Department of Health. Once you've got that designation, then your fellows and gals can do the injections. But it'll be very difficult for some of the other cities to be able to duplicate what we're doing, which is disappointing.
What are the hours of operation?
Eleven to three.
Okay.
Wednesday, Thursday and Friday only.
Yes. Yeah, our goal is to give all six hundred shots this week. That after, after the war, after the marriage, saying after tomorrow, we'll look and see how it goes. It will be, hopefully add a few more people that schedule Thursday, Friday, because it certainly filled up quickly.
Larry?
One final question. What vaccine are we using? And if you get the shot from one of the brands, Moderna or Pfizer, can you get the other shot for the second one?
It's got to be, we're using Pfizer, okay? And my understanding And my understanding is, once you get a shot, you have a card, you have another Pfizer vaccine associated to your name.
Okay.
So you'll get Pfizer again.
Okay. So it's not a mix of that?
No, no. Okay, they're actually going to have two different timeframes, so.
Yeah, you guys posted on social media today, and I think, what, two or three hours later, all the openings were booked, and that's just a reflection. There's huge demand for this in Bella Vista.
Yes, there is.
The vaccine we can get, the more we can serve our residents.
Yep, agreed.
Yep. All right, thanks very much for hanging in with us, and we'll see you on Monday night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.